I think we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming this evening. This will be some of our last meeting tonight and we'll welcome in the new members. So if everybody would like to stand, we'll recite the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Paul, would you lead us in invocation?
We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on this community. Thank you for those who have served and encerched this community. We ask your blessings from them. As we transition, we ask your blessings from them. We give you thanks and praise for leading and guiding us, helping us to be the community that you know we can be. Just look to you, the leading guide. You've given places to talk to us, you've given places to show us how this community can be a community that others can look at and say, "Good work." We thank you for it, we honor you for your guidance and all that you do. We serve you as community prayer.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. I will tell you, sometimes that prayer at the beginning of this meeting is the only thing that's kept me in my seat and not running out that door. So I hope that it's, the invocation continues with the next group. Roll call. Alderman Ward 1 Jeff Lopkins, absent. Alderman Ward 1 Jason Osborne.
Here.
Alderman Ward 2 Mark Greeney.
Here.
Alderman Ward 2 Adrian Saunders.
Here.
Alderman Ward 3 Judon Moss.
Here.
Alderman Ward 3 Kent Shoemaker, is not present. Counsel, if you could review the minutes from the last meeting, April 4th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 4th, 2024.
There.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2024 meeting. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to make a few changes in the schedule of the agenda, Counsel, if that's okay with you. The oaths of office needs to be moved down to, we need to wrap up unfinished business before we swear in the new people. So we're just kind of, kind of flip-flop that and discuss the unfinished business first and then we'll get the new counsel and new mayor sworn in. At this time for public comment, I would like to end on a little bit of a positive note. There are many people in our community that serve diligently and just full of heart. And I've had the pleasure of working with one individual in a nonprofit that we, we serve on and we do the Easter egg hunt and several other things in the community. And everybody is always so giving. We ask of the same people every year for donations and, and they, they give every year. This lady is a friend of mine. She has, she is the cook at Holy Rosary. She has spearheaded the Holy Rosary Carnival by herself several years. She has five children of her own and is so involved. I don't think you could be any more involved with their children than this lady is. She, she heads up the youth basketball for Holy Rosary and coaches. She is a Girl Scout troop leader. I, I don't know how she does it all, but I wanted to take the time to recognize this individual for her service to Monroe City. Angie Chapman, would you please come up?
This is a community service award presented to Angie Chapman. In grateful appreciation of your dedicated service to the people of the community of Monroe City.
Do we have any other public comment? Wow, they're quiet tonight.
Hi everyone.
Yes?
I just want to thank you for your service in this community. Appreciate the work that you have been doing here. All of that, you know, so I just want to thank you back. Thanks. All of you, that, yeah, thank you for your support.
Thank you Pastor, I appreciate that. So, unfinished business. The current projects, I think the last meeting on April 4th, you guys kind of got the low down on the projects that are going on, so I don't really feel the need to kind of rehash any of that, if that's okay with everybody? I know it's on the agenda, so by all means, if somebody has questions about that, we can discuss it, but I didn't want to redo it again if it had already been discussed at the last meeting. Any questions Counsel about that? County Line Road project, CCWFC, and are we good there? Okay. So the unfinished business, Farmers Elevator land acquisition ordinance, you'll find that Did you all find it? I think from my understanding, there had to be a few changes when it was brought up at the last meeting, so this ordinance should reflect those changes.
The only changes is the reflection of the new purchase price. The creative capital 3,000 will be higher than what they originally had estimated. And during that initial meeting, they agreed to match whatever their raise will pay back. So that's why we changed it, reflect on the ordinance.
So if Counsel is in agreeance with this ordinance, if I could have a motion for the first reading?
Motion for first reading and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri, to sell certain real estate to Farmers Elevator Exchange Company of Monroe City.
Have a motion for the first reading and a second roll call vote. Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
Alderman Greeney?
Yes.
Alderman Moss?
Yes.
Motion passes. Have a motion for the second reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City to sell certain real estate to Farmers Elevator and Exchange Company of Monroe City.
Motion tenor reading.
Have a motion for the second reading?
Second.
And a second, Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne? Alderman Greeney?
Yes.
Alderman Moss?
Yes.
Okay, Joey McInney is here, I think, to discuss the bond, so we'll let him speak.
That's all, that's all business too. So, things really have not changed much. Like, everybody here, we're waiting on numbers. Until we get numbers, we can't, it would be as if we went to you and said, "Hey, we lend you some money," and basically you say, "Well, what's your income and expenses?" And until we can get our arms around that, nobody's going to lend us money. I did have a meeting with, a conference call with USDA, and so I'm trying to talk to them. They're the only ones that actually, the state program will actually live without seeing their numbers. And so I am talking to them, don't know much about that. One, one topic though, that is not on here that I just noticed, is McClure, the McClure Engineering Project, is that a water project or a sewer project?
McClure Engineering, was that the Mill Street project? That's been kind of on hold for...
Is that a water or sewer?
It is the...
A little bit of McClure, but not a lot. So, the only reason I mention that is, at the end of this month, knock on wood, we have a program for water and sewer that lets us pay engineering, lets us borrow to pay engineers at no interest cost. And so if, if and when we can do that, I believe it'll close, it's through a federal program, I believe it'll close at the end of the month. So when you have a water or a sewer project and you need to start tapping into the engineering, we're going to be in the same situation where I need to know the income and expenses. I know that doesn't come as a surprise to anybody, but there is a program out there, we are, we're the experts because we're the only ones that have done it, that lets us borrow at no interest cost.
Okay. George, wasn't a lot of the issues, the corrosion problems with that intersection due to storm water runoff?
Yes. And that in fact, gets to be defined as sewer, even though it's stormwater. So, you know, if you like an engineer and if you like McClure, like any of them, we can, we can work through that. And that way, you know, it's kind of nice when you're at a four and a half, five percent market, don't have to pay interest on what you borrow.
And actually, what has been spent on those engineering fees and has been kind of pushed to the back burner, like $33,000 has already been spent on engineering fees that'll have to be redone because of the change in, in pricing?
Right. Well, also to, speaking to that, when we put this on to your ballot, when we passed it, we passed a reimbursement resolution. So you will be able to fill your, refill your coffers when we get, when we actually go to market with this. Everything on your electrical side as well. The electrical is, is quite frankly what keeps me up at night. And I, and what keeps you guys up at night. Without those numbers, I just don't know how I can, my job is to be your fiduciary. My job is to tell you, "Hey, we can do this, this is going to be fine." I have people that want to lend to the city, we just need to get our numbers that we can hang our hat on, that's about it. And I know you guys are doing all you can to do that, and thankfully you've got, how many citizens?
Six. I have six people responding to the official, the official request for bids. I have six of them that are going to make some sort of official response. Right now, the holdup on, on those is, they are trying to rearrange their schedule to actually be onsite in a matter of less than 21 days, if possible. So they're working with their current clients to see if they can push any of that back, if there are any exceptions, and they need to discuss using a grant and applying a grant, a grant on an emergency basis for us to assist with that.
So that is the best I've heard in a year of trying to get this one along. So, and thank you for your context, because it's her context, it's not my context. Thank you guys. And do you have any questions for me?
I think so, not at this time. You pretty much laid out what we need to get done, so you can do your part.
Yeah, so, and, and we've been waiting for the same thing, so. But anything else, any leases? Normally I can point and say, "This is the cheapest lender in the state, won't cost you anything, go to this person." So, equipment leases, anything like that, please contact me, please contact me. I can at least point you typically, for example, everybody says it's two years to get fire trucks right now. You have to order and it's two years before you ever get it, they want you to pay right away. There is a manufacturer out of Louisiana who has, right now he's got, I think, six that he can let go and sell immediately. And so I contacted my other clients and said, "Hey, you're, you're waiting on these." And I know Southern Jackson County, Kansas City, Missouri, Fire Protection District has already ordered some. So it's, they're out there, it's just, again, not what I know they're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you Joey, it's been a pleasure working with you.
It's been fun, thank you.
We'll move on down Counsel to accounts payable. Review the accounts payable. It does say January 11th to January 23rd, is that a typo? Was that out? Okay.
Yeah, that was in my recital, I apologize. It's actually the current since the last council meeting, but we've updated for the The first page is your breakdown, it shows what's due and not quite as detailed as the second page. However, the second page is just simply a breakdown for like the individual vendors. You'll see the vendors on the left-hand side, then you'll see the department in which they apply to, and then the description of what it was actually for, the invoice numbers, and then the breakdown of each individual invoice. So it kind of just helps move through those quickly. And the original invoices are still right there.
So do we now have the brush truck back in, in operation?
The...
Not yet. Gosh, that's been forever.
Repair man. We're waiting for the repair man.
There was also the tractor that was... The one that was being repaired, was it side instructor is O B?
Yeah.
That's finally finished.
It's not on this one?
But it will be on the next one. It was dropped off Monday, is when you brought that to you, O B?
Yeah, about three weeks ago.
It was not three weeks ago.
When the tractor was delivered, yeah, the bill was like 45,000.
So if there aren't any questions about the accounts payable, if I could have a motion to approve?
Approve accounts payable.
Have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable. All those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. I guess that is it, so.
I have a couple things before we close the regular session. Here is purchase order from the street department, I think that's what you have. There is no ice maker for any of the electric, gas, or street department that's working right now. We did the purchase order request form and brought it in, and we do have the other bids. He's got them in his office for the satisfaction of having competitive works, but there was over $1,000 price difference between those models. He said it's something that's really needed, especially in the heat of summer, when guys are out on jobs and can't really leave to go, you know, fill up a cooler, you know, have that ice on, at, at the shops for them to put in their coolers, make sure they have cold water and a center plus 3,000.
We've had one for 30 years, it just came out.
It was used, anyone?
All of it was used.
I say, but it was used when we got it, was it?
Yeah, we got it, yes.
Motion to approve proposal to allow street department to go purchase ice maker from Home Depot for $2,299.
Have a motion for the purchase of the ice maker for $2,299. And a second, second from Alderman Moss, all those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Is that in?
No, not that.
Not opposed, so you got an I?
Yes.
Okay. The four I's, motion carries.
And this is for, you know, review purposes. I do need a motion and vote for our new hire coming on. This is just a job description that I...
Jennifer, were these, was this discussed with the new hire, so she's aware?
Yes, this pretty much matches what was going to be expected of that position anyway. I just wanted to put it in writing, because I don't think we'd ever had anything like that in writing for them. It's the administrative assistant that you guys are...
Yeah, she knows that she'll be helping in the utility sector.
All new hires have to be voted on by Counsel after the recommendation from the board is presented to Counsel. So this is the, just the finalization of this hire that you, the committee has already decided upon.
This job description can be altered, amended. I just wanted to give you guys a basic of what day-to-day duties for that particular position would be. It can be, you know, changed at any point, but we just need an actual city council vote to hire her official on record.
So do I have a motion to approve the new hire for the administrative assistant position?
What if there's a motion, I need to have her name and pay rate and...
Did you all discuss that in the committee? Okay, so, the name?
I'm making Kara Riley with a C.
Kara?
Yeah, Riley, one L.
Okay.
$20 an hour.
Twenty, okay. Okay, so let me rephrase this. I need a motion to approve the hire of Kara Riley for the position of administrative assistant at, at starting pay at $20 an hour. And her start date will be?
Monday.
Monday, April?
22nd. She was not able to commit to that Monday, but she will be starting that week.
When I called her, I was sorry, she would start on the 22nd.
So starting the third week of April?
Yeah, she intends to start that week when she gave, something to come up when she gave notice and she had reached out to me and said, "Hey, a couple days is going to matter." I said, "I don't see why it would be a problem." And that didn't see why it would be an issue on the start date. She even requested if she could come in prior and sit down with, this is separate, sit down with, and just have like a learning session, not anything on the clock, just for knowledge-based purposes, just so she can be even more prepared on her first day.
So a motion to finalize this hire?
I'm making a motion to hire Kara Riley at a starting rate of $20 an hour for that title of administrative assistant.
Have a motion and a second, hire Kara Riley for the administrative assistant position. All those in favor? Anyone opposed, motion carries.
And what I just put in front of you, this is what I touched base on a little bit at the last special council meeting session. It was the repair to the pump that George had presented. The company had, and it was their error, but they forgot to include the cord, correct, George?
Yeah, it's a 20-plus foot cord that actually goes from the pump up out of the pit into the box.
They did agree to supply it to us at complete cost since it was their, their mistake and their error and leaving it off of the original quote. This is the updated amount. It's a excess of 25, 2600?
I don't remember, you have it there, exactly. I was thinking it was 2300.
2300, I don't remember the, the previous exactly, but it's in the, anywhere from 23 to 2500, 2600 ballpark range. But it's also a cost savings of almost $4,000 by the cost.
Is this repaired?
Yes, sir, yeah, because a brand-new one was going to be 13,700.
$13,648.
Yeah.
But it says repaired, $5,648.
That's correct.
Right, we're not replacing it with a new one, we're repairing the one we have.
Yes, sir.
Somebody said a couple thousand, I didn't see a couple thousand.
Well, it's not broken down on here in their quote for the individual cost of the cord. The original repair cost, wasn't it around 34? I would say it was like 3400.
Yeah, it was, the last meeting it was agreed upon, it was, I want to say it was 3,600 is what the original repair quote was.
So where's the price increase at?
It's between the $3,400 to the $5,600, 5,648, 20.
And is there additional stuff listed in here that they forgot, that they left out?
No, there's only, only the, the $2,300 difference for the, for the cord.
And when you see replace 40 cord right here, that, that's the additional cost. They don't have the individual price listed down.
$2,000 cord?
Yes.
Cord made out of copper?
It's made out of copper, as close as you're going to get. Yeah, it's a number three, four wire in a waterproof coating.
And unfortunately, it's, it's unavoidable, it has the, it's necessary and vital to the repairs, can't be done without it.
How, how long is this cord?
45? 45?
Yeah. This is 40 inches.
Well, it can't be 40 inches.
I'm just telling you, 40 with two marks is an inch.
I see it.
Yeah, I'm not trying.
The cord's not going to make it very far. Yeah, it's okay, just erase one of the little doohickeys, it's 40 foot.
I understand.
Is the price still valid, because it says mark your feet?
Yes.
Yes, because I talked to the person today and he said, "Yes, there's no problem without earning that price."
This work hasn't been done yet, has it?
No.
When do you anticipate doing it?
As soon as we give them the okay.
Soon as we give them the okay, soon as we say okay.
Yeah, it'll still be...
This is for where?
The water treatment plant, the sledge lagoons out behind the water. This is the one that, when we backwash the filter without this, we're flooding the basement, then a stump pump has to kick it out and it could flood our humidity meters, which then would be...
It's necessary for operations.
Motion to approve the bills payable for the repair.
A motion to approve the pump repair at $5,648.20. And a second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is the changes that were made to the utility building policy for... is the changes that were made to the utility building policy for moving it from the...
Fifteenth to the twentieth?
Twentieth. It must be formally... We still need to do a reading, that's correct. Yes, we still need to go through the reading and...
Do you have it?
I got it.
Okay. Does everybody have the utility policy?
Or do you not have it either?
So I need a motion for first reading of an ordinance amending section eighty-six point oh eight point oh three oh titled Utility Policy in the Monroe City Municipal Code. The only change to this from the prior, the previous one was changing the due date from the twentieth, from the fifteenth to the twentieth.
And that was the last meeting?
Right.
That voted on what we need to update the ordinance and then...
Okay, I'm making a motion for first reading, uh, an ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight point zero three zero titled Utility Policy in the Monroe City Municipal Code.
I have a motion for first reading, do I have a second? And a second, all those in favor, roll call vote, Adrian, uh, Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne? Alderman Greeney?
Yes.
Alderman Moss? Motion for first reading of the amended section to the utility policy passes. Have a motion for second reading?
Make a motion for a second reading, ordinance amending section eighty-six point oh eight point oh three oh, filing utility policy in the Monroe City Municipal Code.
Have a motion for second reading of such ordinance? Have a second? Second? Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
Alderman Greeney?
Yes.
Alderman Moss?
Yes.
Motion for second reading passes. I think that wraps up old business, I think we're ready to pass on the torch.
Do we have to, before we do that, do we have to certify the election results?
I wanted to certify them, and they passed them, except for the different kind of ordinance about...
Have that signed, okay? Okay, so I need a motion to accept the, um, election results as follows. City of Monroe for mayor, two-year term, Ronnie Miller. For Alderman Ward One, two-year term, Robin Simpson. For Alderman Ward Two, two-year term, Michael Schneider. For Alderman Ward Three, two-year term, Greg Smith. And for Alderman Ward Three, one-year term, Lori Quinn. Do we need to? Okay.
Motion to approve the, uh, official election results.
I have a motion to approve the official election results for twenty twenty-four?
Okay.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I would like to, uh, pre- present a few, uh, plaques for an appreciation for the service to the city of Monroe City. Alderman Mark Greeney?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Jevon Moss? Alderman Watkins is not here, I'll drop that off at his house. Thank you all for serving with me, it's truly been a pleasure. I just wanna close with just one thing, I'd like to read, um, Monroe City does have a motto. It's do what's right, be fair and honest, do the best you can, treat others as they would like to be treated. And there are three questions everyone asks, can I trust you, are you committed, and do you care about me? I know I, I could've done better on, on different things, um, I truly can tell you that I was committed and I can truly tell you that I did care about, I do care and I did care about the city of Monroe City and did the best of my ability, so I wish the new group all the, all the luck in the world and, and, um, God bless you for stepping up. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn for meeting.
Last motion to adjourn this group, do I have a second? Roll call vote, Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
Alderman Greeney?
Amen.
Alderman Moss? Motion adjourned. All right, I just need to quit, I swear in.
So, there's a water... Oh, yeah. Yeah, sure. I'm glad you did this. That's sad. So, there's like, like, like... Yeah. I'm glad you were in the line.
Yeah. We. I'm. Sorry. So. Yeah. We're. This. We got. Yeah.
Are we running square?
Yeah. Yeah. He was. Oh. So. All. You're. It's not. We. Try. We got. All. Like. Yeah. 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 I don't know. You. So. Wow. I didn't know.
I don't know. Is there a new buyer for the second half?
Yeah. Um. Hot. Um.
It's. Yeah. Uh. See.
Yeah. Just.
He. She's just. Yeah. I don't. I'm. I can't. You. I. Bye.
So. Okay. Um. I have a question about. I mean. It's. Well. I mean, surely there's more than this, right?
What's all?
That's all people.
You're.
Well, if it's usual on the. Um. It's. That's the.
The holiday.
Okay. I.
One thing he sent me was a.
Very.
I don't. There. No.
Yeah. Okay. And. They asked. To.
Well, sounds.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm watching.
Yeah. He's got. I know.
You.
I don't.
Actually. I think. No. That was. Then we. Actually. Yeah. Very. Yeah. Yes. I'll. Yeah. We. Uh huh. Yeah. Come up here. I think you can do all at the same time. We.
I'll be.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
There's. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm. People. Yes. Bye.
Can we add a quiet please to leave proceed? Thank you. Ronald Miller, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do so solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will wear true, true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
I Ronald Miller, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear pure faith allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Thank you. Well. There. This. Thank you. You. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Lori Quinn, Robinson Simpson, Michael Schneider, and Greg Smith from board.
Welcome to the hot seat. The hot seat. What?
Will you all please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I. And then be your name. Do so solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will wear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God. Everybody. Can you find?
I, Robert Schneider, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will wear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Thank you very much. I. Thank you. Come. What? I got you right here. Stay in your. You. At least.
It's always. It's always.
Yep. That's. Yeah. I'm.
Very.
Right.
That's a part.
It's.
Yeah.
I'm.
I would.
Thank you so much. Welcome to the. Still. Are you? Michael, step on up. Say your.
I. I know.
Not anymore. Good. Yeah. I just.
We.
That's. The.
Thank you. God bless.
I lost.
Thank you. Hmm. Very. She. She did. Thank you.
Thank you. Very. It's. Maybe. No.
Ready.
Are you ready? Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Let's do a roll call. Ward one. Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Ward one, Alderman Osborne.
Here.
Ward two, Alderman Saunders.
Here.
Ward two, Alderman Snyder.
Here.
Ward three, Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Ward three, Alderman Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, let's begin. Uh. I would like to ask if we could make a change to the current agenda. According to our ordinances, in order to change the agenda, we have to have an agreement by a majority of the aldermen present. I would entertain a motion to allow the chair to modify the agenda.
I make a motion to allow the chair to modify the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any one oppose? All right. With that being concluded, what I would like to do is go to the second page of the current agenda. I would like to go ahead and do the department reports. It's gonna be a long meeting. Please chief, uh, please chief James.
Good evening. I've got a few things. Uh, first I would like to start with is our new hire who is currently at training still at, uh, Missouri University. He did get granted the five thousand dollar grant to cover, uh, covers tuition for the academy. Uh, with that being said, there are still a bunch of expenditures that come with being in the academy. Speaking with him, uh, he did request that he could remain on contract if we could keep the five thousand we already invested, invested into him, that will keep him on the contract with us. Uh. And then that is something that will help him be able to kind of support himself a little bit better going through the academy. Uh, right now all he has is income that he's getting from us, which is tremendously less than what he's gonna be making as an actual officer. So I would ask for that tonight, that we go ahead and continue to give him that five thousand that we're trying to get for tuition as a, uh, as basically an education check for him, be able to use for education.
I'll make that motion, Zachary. I'm not sure the word is, but for.
It's for our new hire, Nick Delph.
For the new hire, for the five thousand dollars?
Yeah, it'd be continuing with the five thousand dollar contract that we were going to issue in five thousand dollars for.
It'll essentially be considered a sign-on bonus, uh, which is very hard to find new officers willing to come to work in their city. Uh, the sign-on bonus, uh, allows the relocation cost, um, allows them to be established in their city. The cost, I believe, has already been spent. Uh, it can be handled in terms of the grant would be sent to, uh, the school and then the school would write him a refund check of repayment of tuition. Um, and I believe.
So the money's, yeah, the money's already been given to the school. At this point, with the great pain in play, the only thing to change is that money will come back to us. Uh, but if we go ahead and forward with this, that money will just be carried back to Nick Delph's and then he'd still be on the four-year contract with us for.
And then Zachary, just to add, he has to pay that back.
Yes, he doesn't. Yes, he doesn't. He's four years and he has to pay back a portion of that, so, uh, a quarter of it for each one of those four years. Uh, the other thing is when they're in the academy, they have departments there almost they trying to pick people up, so he could not have one contract. The likelihood of not getting him as an officer here goes up.
And one, another benefit to the city of doing this is when, um, you give a sign-on bonus, um, it also allows for certain tax credits and eligibility of certain grants when it comes to the police department. Um, I've been trying to narrow down, um, and define, naturally find and identify one particular grant that the police department would benefit from or the city would benefit from. Um, I hopefully will have that to present to council very soon for you guys to review, but there is benefits when it, when it's handled that way in a sign-on bonus capacity.
Can, can you provide, uh, the correct motion to be made, the terminology to use correctly? Are we talking sign-on bonus or are we talking contract?
Well, so this, um, he, he will be in an employment contract, uh.
There he is.
Yeah. So he is already on a contract with us.
Okay.
But that was for repayment of, of the tuition money.
Understood.
So once that tuition is covered, speaking with him, he requested that we do the sign-on bonus with him, that will keep him on contract and also help him through the academy. Uh, it would still be for the five thousand as it was originally.
Uh, so I'm gonna get ahead and clarify. So we, we agreed to do five thousand dollars, but he received an addition, he received a new grant, basically, is that what?
Yes.
Which we had covered, so, okay.
The grant, we did not get, we did not have enough time to get that grant secured before he actually started the academy. So we had to pay upfront. Once that grant came through, that now frees up that five thousand that we had, because it can only go to the academy, the grant money cannot go there.
The correct terminology that you're asking for is, um, a council member would need to make a motion saying, um, I make a motion to allow our, our potential new hire, should he, with the exception of him fulfilling the current contract, allow him to keep that five thousand dollar sign-on bonus?
Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to allow the new hire for the police department, as long as he fulfills his contract obligations to retain the five thousand dollar sign-on bonus.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You wanna pose? Motion passed.
Okay, thank you all. The second thing I have is, uh, for about eight months now, we've been running on one body camera. Uh, we used to have one for each individual officer. Now we've got ones running twenty-four hours around the clock, uh, and it is starting to kind of become an issue. We took some time to try to look into grants, however, uh, we're not finding anything that is specific to body worn cameras that we're able to move forward at this time. We do have a new company that's contacted us called Lens Lock. Uh. We're gonna be looking into dealing with them as well, trying to get a quote from them, uh, basically it's a thousand dollars per camera per year for a five-year contract. Uh, there's a few more things that are involved in that, however, I'll update you with that on the next council meeting. But I just wanted to let you know that we are exploring, uh, that one as well and that we will be signing up to get a top, uh, trial run with them. They're gonna be coming in within the next week or two. Uh, it's gonna be free of charge, that'll allow us to be able to see the equipment review and check and make sure it's all the one before we even go forward with this, so. If we'd like it, we'll have, uh, we'll have some more quotes for you all at the next upcoming meeting on body cameras. And then the last thing I have is on May twenty-fifth, um, there's going to be a car show. And like most of the car shows around here, they're asking if they can do a burnout competition. Um. I talked with a couple of gentlemen who were gonna be running this. They were asking that they be able to use Gateway Square on the east side, which is there behind, uh, by where the old insurance was down to where these storage sheds are. Think if we were going to do this in town, that would probably be the best spot to do it. They'd be doing, going away from traffic, they've got patrol area to end in, uh, and they've got plenty of seating area to be able to stay off on the sides. However, that is not my decision. That's something that would ultimately have to come up with you all, if you're okay with that.
Is that the street by the hotel outside?
Yes. So before we go forward with any of it, I would say that that would be our best bet is to go ahead and talk to the hotel, the powder peels, they have a parking lot there for a bunch of their trucks. I'd like to speak with them too, but I want to get your all's input on this, on whether it's even a possibility, because if it's not, I don't want to waste their time, so.
I, I think I would recommend that the council refer to the city attorney's recommendations on potential life.
I was thinking we needed to talk to Mark. Yep. Then I would like to be, then I personally mind of that.
Personally, i- i- personally, I can't speak to the board, but personally, my recommendation to the board would be if, if we, we can be held blameless in case of an accident, then that would be a positive towards making a decision to say yes. But if not, we have to weigh the consequences.
Can I clarify something real quick? It's not a part of the, the car, it's a car meet, it's not part of that. It's separate. Just so we, there's no confusion on that. Okay.
Oh, okay.
It just happened to be the same day. Okay.
It is a DTMC sponsored event.
No. The DTMC. The, the DTMC car meet is gonna be around St. Jude's, but the request to do this burnout thing is separate from that. Yes.
That's, that's good to know. Thank you, Sid.
Yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, can I add one thing about the body cams? Um, have you, um, gotten a new or yes or no on the murmur grant for the body cam?
Uh, that does not come out until, uh, around August. That's the way they explained it to us.
I thought we could still use funds available last year, was the way I understood it.
Uh, I would have to check with.
Yep.
But other than that, that's all I have. And if anybody has any questions for me?
Uh, what about the issue of trash or pork patties? You know, are they gonna clean up after themselves and?
Uh, that would be something that they would have to talk to you about on that part.
Okay.
The only thing I have on this is just whether or not we would be willing to postpone, uh, enforcing CNI and speed on, on that record that may, during that period.
Jump the time?
Uh, I do not know. I believe they said it was gonna be towards the afternoon, be after everything else shut down, uh, like you said, it'll be on the.
Do you by chance know the group that is interested in doing the burnouts?
Individual.
Is it by chance the, um, General Riders Club?
Not, not part of the club or anything. Individual, it's just private.
Private, if you want to.
Yeah. And I can let them know that it would be beneficial for them. Yeah, and I can let them know that it would be beneficial for them to come up to us next meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think this, I probably can't speak for the board, but I would say that what I've seen happen in the past, that that ends up being carried over on through the, one of the main streets as they're leaving that little expedition. And we would want to be very cautious if they tell us that, that's not going to happen. That's just me speaking from my personal opinion.
We'll tell you, you put a lot of thought into it, you put a lot of consideration into those things that happen that way, once they have it organized.
Very well, very well.
Yeah, you advise that if we wanted to come send an officer down there, just make sure they stay on that.
That, that would certainly give me a sense of reassurance.
So that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, thank you all.
Fire Chief Phoenix?
So this is pretty much just a renewal. Uh, this is an e-dispatch system that we have in our firehouse. We've had it for three, four years now. What it does is, it goes over, we get a call from nine-one-one, it kicks it out to our phones. So that's all, that's all it does, is it, is it records it, puts it on our phones so that we have that. Uh, so we can go back, replay it, the whole nine yards. If somebody was in Hannibal, they could replay it, they could hear it, even if they was in Kansas City or anywhere, as long as they have internet, they can, they can play that. The cost of this is seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for the year. That's twelve-month deal.
And it stores within something purchased for years and years?
Yeah, this is, like I said, this is just a renewal. Because of us being on freeze, I had to come meet you guys and ask for the permission.
Who's the contract with?
Contract is with Penguin Management.
I believe our police department uses e-dispatch too. Red, is that?
Is that you all using e-dispatch?
Uh, the police department is not.
No.
It's just they use part of it.
So we have three different systems or two different systems?
I mean, that's it. I mean, we have, we have radios and then we have e-dispatch. Those are your two systems that you have. So if for some reason you didn't hear, you know, if you get down the valley or whatever, you're at least going to hear it off of one thing. And nine-one-one only, when they page you out, they only page you once. So they tell you what, yeah. It used to be three times. They would page you three times in a row. Now it's one time. And you better get it all before they, before they're done. At least this way we can go back and we can listen to our stuff and say, okay, well, this is where that address is and then look at, at the fire station and then head there. But yes.
What say you, board?
Is it, this rate comparable to what it was last year? I mean, I'm sure there's something-
Absolutely. Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't changed. Actually, I don't think it's gone up at all since last year.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve their renewal of the, uh, e-dispatch.
E-dispatch, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the renewal of the contract with Penguin Management. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So it passes.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quickly, based on something that Chief Phoenix just mentioned, may I recall? Chief James, briefly, you stand if you like. You don't, you don't have to come up if you don't want to. Uh, the question was just posed about the nine-one-one system, number of times paged. Is, is that asked for one time?
That is, that is.
Is that, is that problematic for us? Has it been?
For the police department, it isn't. We, since we're on twenty-four-seven, we don't operate through a page-out system. However, the ambulance does as well. They're set the same way, they're phaged one time. That is something that can be addressed, but it has to be addressed through, uh, procedures with, uh, the dispatch, dispatch center, uh, all the staffs there. Ultimately, it is their decision on whether or not they will do that. That's about the only way that you can take care of that.
Why did that change? They said it used to be three and now it's one. Is there a reason for that, do you know?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the reasoning is for that change, uh, probably two years ago.
Yeah, it, it changed a couple of years ago and they do, they do every department that way. They do, uh, Paris, Madison and all that. It's like, well, one time and I tried to, I fought with them and said, fuck, we need three times. And I said, well, we're asleep at night. I said, one time's not going to wake these guys up. I said, but it wakes them up, but they need to know, you know, while they're getting their stuff on, you got three times to do this. And with the amount of money that Monroe City does pay, we pay a fortune to Monroe County.
Yeah, the twenty-five department, police department, ambulance, uh, ambulance is third and fourth. We pay well over fifty percent, so.
So we're a, a, a very fairly large contributor to their total operating budget. What mechanism is the correct one to use to let them know that we're unhappy with their process?
Uh, first step would be going through their, uh, their director, administrator Danielle.
Danielle, actually Danielle reaches out to me on a weekly basis, uh, and this started within the last two and a half, three weeks. Um, she has started doing the reports on the amount of calls, um, that go to Monroe County, uh, and I, I think she would easily accommodate changes or be happy to come to a meeting, um, to do any changes or discuss those changes, how it needs to be modified going forward.
I'd entertain a motion for the board to make an order that the city clerk contact, who is it?
Uh, Danielle Ross, Rossia.
All right, to discuss changing their process back to three pages versus one?
And if something-
Yeah, I mean, even the, even the dispatch now, it's, they get addresses wrong. They sent us to JJ one day. There is no JJ in our district. It's Ralph J. I mean, they have done this several different times and it's like, I, I think it's because they hired so many different people that they had to get retrained and all that. I mean, it's something that we'd even look at going to Mary County and going to Nicon, something like that. Because like Zach said, we do pay, we pay a tremendous amount. But what would, what would probably happen if we'd done that is, there probably would be, you know, that one up there because of that. And that's, I think that's kind of the reason why we don't.
We're the biggest customer.
Uh, we're the biggest customer they have. We are. Well, when you're, when we're paying out, we're paying out thirty-five thousand, obviously, to the fire department for them to page us. We had two hundred and thirty calls last year. That's a lot of money for just paging. And I think, you guys, I think you guys paid us the same value. And that's for all different calls. So, yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion to, uh, provide an order to the city clerk to authorize her to conduct nine-one-one, or be the, your contact person, and make a formal request that they change back to a three-page system for emergency contact, the fire department, the police department, the ambulance department. May I have a motion, please?
No, I said, and that, uh, the ambulance-
Ambulance is on their own.
They're on their own.
They're on their own. Okay, my apologies. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion for the city clerk to, uh, get ahold of her contact, uh, for, at nine-one-one services for the police department and fire department on behalf of them, for the city of Monroe City, to, uh, go about changing the protocol from one to three, um, callouts.
Do you have, I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. You're so direct, clerk. Good luck. Let us know how it goes. All right, for water, George, please.
I really don't have anything to report tonight. Uh, you know, uh, everything's going well at the water plant right now. Uh, as well as at the wastewater plant, we are receiving a lot more water with the, uh, the rain and the INI, uh, than we experienced, but, I just wanted to also offer, anybody that wishes to come, uh, view the water plant or the wastewater plant, you're welcome anytime. If I need to stay a little bit late to, to take you on a tour, more than happy to do so. The city clerk can give you my phone number and I'm, I'm available twenty-four-seven for anything you guys need.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And I would definitely second that. If anybody has an opportunity to actually go out there and, uh, to word, but again, I highly recommend to do that because it is very nice, very clean, very state-of-the-art stuff. We should be proud of it.
That's good. Thank you. Um, Mr. Lee for electric. Okay, that's fine. That works for me. Anyone have any objection to that? Moving that forward on the agenda? Okay. Yes.
What about Mr. McLein?
Actually, we cannot do that and there's a reason why. We can't, we cannot move Eaton Electric's, um, uh, proposal or discussion until after we talk to Mr. McLein. Go ahead. And if you want to delay your report, you're more than welcome to. If you want to at the same time, you can do it separately.
It's really two separate issues.
Let's do it. Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, uh, y'all have your report. Uh, do you trust me to read it to you?
No, what do you have in that thing?
We, we didn't receive it for it.
I'll try and, I'll try to read it real quick. All of them, three of them canceled. We just, whole change out, continuing to create new substation, uh, project, uh-
That's what I wanted to talk about. The sub, substation located down at industrial side, so that is the one that the transformer has failed.
Right.
The city has purchased a refurbished transformer from Rasa Power out of Los Angeles. You can have the contract to install and commission that new transformer. We were on schedule to do that next week. It was supposed to be delivered next week up until yesterday. They contacted me yesterday, Rasa did. It failed one of the quality and tests, which, which they do prior to shipping it. It was actually the winding resistance test. It's over my head. I didn't know what that was. So I sent the results of that to Eaton Electrical Engineers and they agreed that Monroe City should not take possession of that until Rasa Power addresses that.
Okay.
Which they've agreed to do. They, they have, uh, gone back and said they're going to tear apart, they're going to find what the problem is. The issue is they don't know how long it's going to take. So what was going to be done next week is now down the road sometime. In addition to getting rid of the existing transformer that the council voted on the last meeting. So that, that's been sold. That will all happen at the same time. The, the old one will ship out, the new one will come in. So you can only, you only need to hire the crane one time. So that's a very large crane. It costs a lot of money to do that. That's, that's the only reason that I'm here, to explain and answer any question you guys may have about that.
They don't have an ETA, like weeks, months?
Unfortunately, it just came to me late yesterday afternoon and his email says, the delayed shipment cannot forecast until we diagnose the problem.
Will they be able to get to it right away?
They're on it, but they started tearing into it today. Yeah, so they, they are aware that, uh, you know, obviously Monroe City is at risk without it. But fortunately, I, I gotta give Rasa credit, they didn't ship it, you know, to us. There is a two-year warranty on it that, that Rasa has. They didn't ship it. We wouldn't have known the difference until we, we got it and the, uh, yeah, that, that we had a problem. So I, I do commend them for that, but, uh, and we, we discussed it. I don't think the city wants any kind of a, a risk there. They've agreed to address it. I think that's best off. And as soon as we know some more, know what the issue is, I'm happy to come back and speak to the council on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Does that change the cost at all?
No, no, that has, that has not changed the cost at all. Actually, I went back and I asked them, I said, please tell me what the issue was with the transformer that the city has devised. So it is a refurbished transformer. And I said, what made it fail to begin with? And I'll, actually, I'll review that. He said the existing, or the new transformer, the refurbished transformer did not fail. It was simply removed from service and then purchased by Rasa. And then he listed the work that was done to recondition it, so.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, was that a copy of that, uh? Uh, and, uh, this West Sub, our substation project, we are, uh, waiting for the east substation to be done. So we can backbeat from the east to the west and, and then we can start on the west substation. As soon as, uh, our, we get our books and orders and get that done, uh. Ward one, I did, we did locate, some need to change out the security bike, re-reinstall new pole and reinstall the service to the pool. Uh, worked on the east sub, just connected the sixty-nine K V tire going into that. Protecting the transformer, which the switch was already open, but we opened it at the main switch from the northeast, uh, that ties into the northeast and then we grounded those out. Uh, Ward, uh, Ward two, locate again, install pole at Washington at Fifth Street Avenue and- Uh, that's a typo. That was from previous. Uh, Ward three, uh, locate, uh, work on the digger truck. I had planned on taking the digger truck to Cowards today and pick up our fifty footer. That way the digger truck will be looked at by a technician and okay to be, be put back in use. Uh, the reason I didn't take it today, it was only me in there working today and I didn't have the manpower to send somebody over there. I like to keep two guys in town at all times. Uh, this may be pushed back to later days.
Is that currently out of service? It's currently out of service?
It works right now, but if nobody wants to run it, I can't force them to run it.
Very well.
Uh, uh, Ward three, locate, work on, uh, boy, that cuts, oh, that was in the last. We installed the AMI units in Ward three also, uh, clean shot trucks, uh, of the electric park buildings. Uh, service, uh, removed the service on Oak Street for the grain project. Uh, and what we can plan on to continue doing is, uh, they're, they're working at the east substation. We will bring them as much as, if, if needed. Uh, they haven't asked for anything except borrow some fire hose. George, uh, like, uh, we plan on keeping up on the AMI installs, whole inspections, whole change outs, work orders as needed. So that's just the work we've done in the past two weeks.
Any questions, anyone?
I have a question. On the, uh, festival panels that we provided, are we still taking meter readings off of those?
We will, we need, uh, it's up to the council if they want to pursue this, but yes, I will take, uh, meterings. Uh, the festival panels, Debbie has mentioned that we have installed panels for festivals because we agreed to buy the parts and pieces for that. So you have a permanent one right here at the, at the church on Essene. That's where the spot is. We also have power all around the park now. We have power on.
Winter?
Winter. Thank you. We have permanent power at winter. And we still put a temporary here on East Summer Street for when they shut that down.
I have an old building.
What's the purpose?
Yes, that's. But we did have one on East Summer too, right? And we provided that fire hose on my ass. We take the meter readings and I take them to Power Works. And there's the minimal use of data.
Less than $10 for the power?
Well, and one of them does get usage, but it does have the church on it. And it runs through the whole weekend. Why it's come on the wall, all that, around air conditioning.
So thank you GTMC for paying the utility bill at the church during the pandemic.
And that's the only one that really has made major usage ever.
So the church is getting free power then?
Well, it's the city. I mean, the city.
Wonder where you're going with that one. This is going to be interesting. Anything else, Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, anything else for us? Anything else for us? Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Gas department, Mr. Osborne? Where'd he go?
I see what you did there that I can tell you. I don't know. Did you say anything about that gas smell in that email that I sent? That gas smell, that call I got, have you said anything yet about that on Border Street? I don't think so. I think I just sent it.
No, I think you included it. I seen gas on there.
Oh, about on Border Street, someone called and said that they could smell gas when they're driving on the street?
Yes.
Yeah, there at Lawn. My Kate. It's between Mike Cracker and Brad Farmer's, that street.
Okay, well, I didn't check my email today because I wasn't cleared.
Oh, yeah, I sent it earlier in the week.
I'll make sure that Laura finds out what's going on.
Good enough. Any questions for Mr. Osborne? Thank you very much, sir.
May I ask anything to the gas department?
Sure.
So there has been about, I think, four, maybe five compliance reports that are passed due for the gas department to various different agencies. We've been working with Kerry and the gas department on getting those completed as soon as possible. There are some issues with requests going to emails to employees who are no longer with the state. They reached out to me last week. I've been working with Scott and the gas department on trying to get all of those numbers collected and get those reports pushed out. I hope you can have that completed no later than, I would say, next Tuesday, hopefully.
Depends on whether we get all the numbers, right? Right now, I have all the numbers. I got the numbers, Panhandle, I got two sets of numbers. I'm not sure which one I'm supposed to use. One's a little higher than the other one. I'm not sure if they're. Show them through the central station because we got to pay for gas to run them. And then they're showing what we actually used. I need to contact Panhandle or somebody. Okay, come here. Because they changed their whole program at Panhandle.
Are these the readings that Shirley used to do?
Some of them, yes.
Yeah, it's related to some of that information that was previously collected by Shirley. And we're also trying to, I've been working with Scott, to plan going forward to be able to track those numbers. And then have, just make it a whole lot more systematic and not fall through the cracks next year and be hit with a significant $10,000, $20,000 fine.
Is there a fine associating with my get them?
It could be. Normally, if you're working on something though, and you have a legit excuse, like I think we have a legit excuse. Just our bookwork hasn't been very good since I've had.
Is there a deadline before we start getting fined?
I guess it's already passed.
So Jason Dignite is the, I don't know what his actual title is. But he definitely is a person of authority with the PHSMA and the gas regulatory. He's got the .gov email. So I know he's, and I think he's involved with at least 30 of them. He's currently working with me. I've explained the situation. He's made clear that we got a date that submitted ASAP. So I know we won't get a fine between now and next Friday. But I would like to get those completed and submitted by next Friday, please.
Because ASAP is not a date.
Correct. ASAP is not a date. I would like to set a deadline of Friday to get those submitted.
Are there any obstacles other than not knowing which numbers we should be using?
Yeah, some of the obstacles are the process. And it was just something that recently just was kind of sprung on, did at night, on figuring out what numbers they need, where to go to get all that information. A lot of it's at different websites. We no longer have the login to those websites because they belong to employees that don't work here anymore. So there's a lot of different moving parts that we've got to get figured out. I've set a golden deadline for myself for them to be done, submitted by Friday, no later. And Jason Dignite is aware of that and he is okay with that.
Have you reached out to the former employee? Has she provided any of the information?
Oh, she doesn't remember the login. She didn't memorize them.
The one for Panhandle has changed. They've just got Gary Alver's name on it. So it doesn't have long ago left there.
And he's actually on my list to call tomorrow morning to get some help with this too.
And when I followed her, she gave me a list, a two-page list about steps to go to get into this. They changed their whole setup down there. It doesn't work at all. We have to do it differently.
Is there any reset passwords? I can tell you from personal experience, it's a little harder to change passwords with Panhandle. You have to jump through a lot of hoops and you don't just, or you get clemency from the governor.
Well, we may be able to make that happen.
We may be able to. Is it an issue that we don't have access to that email anymore?
I can get on Panhandle's website, but there's probably certain areas that I can't get in.
The areas that you need to get into?
Well, I've got Gary Alver's name and I've got the password where I can get into the quick ones. They call that the quick connect or whatever.
Right.
And that's all news to me. I never got to mess with that before.
They may be able to issue.
And your login name.
They won't let me change Gary Alver's name. I can put my phone number in there.
If you don't have access to those emails anymore, is that the issue?
Excuse me?
Is the issue that we don't have, those email addresses don't exist anymore?
Well, the one that they used to have in there was on CenturyLink or CenturyPal. And with now, it's all more site.org email on our computer.
Okay, so what does it take to update that with them?
I'm working on that too.
Generally, on their website, once you get in and logged in, you could go in and put your request in. I have to say, I had lost my password at one point in time a couple of years ago. And it probably took me 10 days to get it reset.
We, Scott and him got it reset and I already know what password is.
So if you're on their website, you go to the app in the left-hand corner, you should be able, there's a drop-down box? Did you find the reporting there you needed?
On the personal stuff, when I bring it up, it's got Gary Alver's name, but it's not bold enough. I can change it on it. I can put my phone number in underneath of it.
My plan for tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock is to have a conference, or a conference call with Gary and with Jason Dignite on how to make this happen no later than Friday of next week.
What time are you going to do that, Paul?
10 o'clock. If Kerry can make that call, then he should be able to.
We should be able to.
Can I have permission to be patched into that?
I still need to statistic from city halls as far as how many meters, how many customers we've got, active meters, the usage per month, how much we bought, how much we sold. They don't need to get into BTUs, but that is what you would call it.
We have that information, correct?
Some of it, yes. It's just, we don't have that program like Shirley didn't, I guess, that she kept up on that.
Shirley didn't really have a program. She had in cell file, in the cell file, it doesn't really say where that information came from. She took it off of a Panhandle invoice. There was some detailed instructions on logging into the Panhandle website, but all of that is happening and doesn't work anymore.
It's working.
And I actually planned to call Shirley tomorrow morning toward the conference call here.
Did you say you need to know how many meters we have?
She could give me that eventually. We're just trying to get all this other stuff.
Okay, I was trying to figure out what it is that you need that you can't get within the city.
I've got all the numbers up till August of 2023. I need the rest of the months till December.
We got all the billing upset. That's about it now.
Because they want an average BTU by the month, by the year. That's fine. But I got the daily readings of what we actually purchased. But I'm not sure if Panhandle is giving us everything with Perry included or if that are the numbers with Perry on it. So I need to talk to somebody and give me clarification on that.
So we're buying gas from two different companies?
No. Perry buys gas through our line. We wheel to them. But in order to get our true numbers, the numbers we actually uses, we have to have all those meters that are on our feeder line. That's got to be on there. Plus the whole town, they got to be done metered. Perry gets deducted off of that. And so we know what we actually get purchased or have wheel to us. Panhandle, all they do is wheel gas because we don't even buy anything. Most of our gas comes from MBUA or Vista Energy, from what I distinguish so far. Is that right? Or do you got a line?
No.
They use different companies. MBUA have, and they sell gas to a lot of messles up in the multi-sexuals area. I'm a member of MBUA.
Adrian, if you would like to be on the call, I don't see there's any reason why you couldn't. Thank you.
Go for it.
Just push me in on my cell, please.
I'll text you.
Anyway, I was hoping to get my stuff finished up tomorrow. That part on Panhandle. Any other questions?
Nothing.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Street Department, Mr. O'Brien, please come forward. I apologize for typo. I didn't type it personally.
I'm not agreeing with you to speed this thing up. My report should be in your office package. You got questions, holler. What I want to bring up tonight is hiring my summer help. Two of them. Ryan Hayes, Marty Smizer. Paying minimum wage. I need to let them know before they try to find another job. They may have only two applications I had.
Are you good at that?
You're good to go.
I'm going to do the same thing last year. I had two applications.
Can you, can you please repeat those names again?
Ryan Hayes.
Ryan?
Ryan, R. R-Y-A-N. Marty Smizer.
Marky? Marty.
Smizer, like Smizer? I wrote the name down.
The other thing, I bring Mike Tulley in every year. He's just temporary. He starts Monday hopefully.
Okay.
So this third year.
Do you need the board?
He's retired and now he comes back mainly to mow.
Okay, do you need a board approval? You need a board approval for that?
Yes.
Yes, you need to vote a motion and vote to hire the summer help.
Okay.
And establish a rate to pay as well.
With who?
1230 is minimum wage. So the summer help, 1230.
So the person making the motion, they got all these.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to hire Ryan Hayes and Marty Smizer for seasonal summer help at a rate of $12.30. $12.30, which is minimum wage per hour.
We have, I'm sorry.
Okay, a second.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Now we need one more, correct?
I'm making a motion to hire Mike Tulley, a seasonal summer help at a rate of $20 per hour.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Kevin. All right. In the, within the department reports, the next item is cool. Oh, airport. I apologize. Well, gone. I almost skipped out. Airport, please.
I went to Robins last week, picked up a car mirror.
Awesome.
And I installed it myself. Played a little play and I had a K-17 sold to the city at cost.
Awesome.
That's fantastic.
That's good that we can continue to use anybody in the city anytime. The screen on the car mirror, they gone bad. I called Anders, a dealer for over a month. They came yesterday with a new screen, put it in, it didn't work. It turned out the front circuit board was bad. He went back. And today he came back with a new circuit board and installed it and it's back working.
Yeah.
As far as what that's going to cost, I don't know. But I'd say it probably won't be cheap.
I'm confident with most things.
The city came out this week in mow and they did a fantastic job. They did fill the gas. They did really good job. It really looks nice. So we get an awful lot of compliments.
And we're here for a time mow.
Yeah, they did really good. And we do get a lot of compliments from pilots that come in and say, "Airport really looks good." And state inspectors said it's one of the best of few inspections in the state.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
And I had a call today, someone coming in tomorrow or Monday wanting to use a curtsy car. So we're happy we have that. And other than that. I think we've got beacon light bulbs on order, had a new mix alcohol order when we had a 50 mile an hour wind a couple of weeks ago. Shredded the. and shredded the windsock that they put on when they did the flying project. And it's a big sock, I think, uh, probably about a hundred dollars, wasn't it, or a year?
Um, it was quite a bit more than a hundred dollars. Uh, I think it came out to three hundred and some dollars for, because it's twelve foot and it has to be made out of a special cloth unless you wanna buy it every three months, essentially. But it's a twelve foot by thirty-six inches, twelve by three foot. Um, and it's the, uh, FTA standards?
Excuse me?
FTA standard, what is the, like, standards, FTA standards?
The.
Yes, that's what I was referring to, the FTA standards.
I've got a note in called in, which is a notice to airman, which they put out, to everybody that's flying it, looks at it, and it tells them that the beacon's out and the windsock is ruined. We have two other windsocks that they can use. So we're off. That's good.
Not without any. You have two of the three.
We have two small ones, now that are still, that are still up, that they, when you fly, where you can see the direction of where it is. Know which way to land.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, next, in the department report section, I'll get it right this time, is the pool. With the board's permission, I would like to delay that until we discuss item eight, or excuse me. Item nine under added human resources, that way we can do it all at one time, if you're okay with that? Any objections? All right. With the board's permission, I go, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, bring forth, uh, the rest of our guests on new business. The first would be, go ahead.
On the electric department report, the last item on there. The emissions.
Oh, the park street?
Yeah.
The very last thing?
Well, he's been doing it, he's been, uh. He was stepping in as the building inspector.
Right.
Oh, heck.
Charlie, we should talk about that separate day.
So is he no longer?
He sent it in one of these.
Effective? Now, I guess. Excuse me? Can, can we leave this on the table for now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, the condemnation report for two eleven parks, we laid on the table for now. Any objections? Okay.
Okay, if I may proceed, uh, I'd like to move the rest of our guests for new business forthwith because we've got a lot more ground to cover. Uh, Howl, Howe Company, Shannon Howe, please step forward.
These two are current together.
These two are? Okay, and Mark Twain, Regional Council, as well, somewhat simultaneously, I think. Go ahead, please.
Sure, so my name is Shannon Howe. I'm the owner of Howe Company, we're making, we're your engineering firm for the Kennedy Line Road Project. It's our, I thought we would come over today, have a few things to hand out. We're not necessarily going to do it all, but it would be a source of information for everybody as you consider things and make some decisions. That's what I'll ask you. So, uh, one of the things I want to update you on is, of course, you received a, a grant for the majority of those costs. And, uh, we're on schedule as required by the, the EDA folks. Uh, we recently submitted, uh, final plans, completed all of the, uh, engineering tasks through the design phase. And so, uh, that design's been approved, or has completed the checklist requirements that EDA has. There's, uh, some other notices that any people want to clear. You're going to be in a position where this project can be advertised for good. Realize it probably has the place to think about. But, uh, the handout that I gave you is kind of a timeline of some various things that have happened on the project. That provides some good history. About two-thirds or three-quarters of the way down shows you some information on the EDA grant amount. The, uh, the match that was committed to by the city, the total project cost. And I can tell you that, uh, the construction process, and what we, we came up with was, the design was completed, it's very close to that number, it's within a few hundred dollars. And that project is basically the lighting, County Line Road from Second Street down to East Cleveland, except at the railroad tracks, uh, it's a twenty-four feet wide. Added two foot on each side, putting in some appropriated pipe, which is our, like, that one. Providing an easy way for that to get away. So yeah, so we've completed those, uh, there's some, some action items that are needed if you're gonna move forward with this. Those are all on the, on the third page. And, uh, put most of these together today, but, uh, the third page shows some important things. This table right here kind of shows the, the schedule that EDA is expecting you as a city to, to maintain. And we're on, so far, I think we're probably still on track if we, if we were able to start very soon to, uh, have started construction, starting by the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of July. The project's gotta be done in twenty-seven and basically close it out. So there's, uh, quite a lot to do. As far as what's next, uh, one of the things that I brought with me that does need to be signed if you're moving forward is a DNR construction permit application for some water line locations wanting to be done. If you haven't already done so, you pay the engineer, and the grant administrator. And then, uh, once the required period for public, public notices are passed through EDA, then we'll advertise something that's good construction. And when that's done, you close your grant out. So in that show, that's where you're at. I brought some sets of plans. I'd be glad to share those, if you kind of, you like looking at those, you can, if you'd like to explain. If you're willing to come over and sit down with me, we might do more detail. While actually you have some challenges ahead of you and some decisions to make. And, uh, we'd be glad to help you with whatever information I can get. Uh, we have some invoices back in March. Appreciate some attention on those as soon as time comes.
So this, this appears to be a twenty percent matched by the city, is that correct? Is that right? So, um, the city, even though it's a, it's a one point eight million dollar project, the city's on the hook for three hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, correct? That's if nothing changes.
That's correct.
So if the price of construction goes up, your fees go up, right? Because are they based on construction?
Uh, our, our fee is basically fixed amount.
Okay, so it's not a percentage of the.
And once you get past the third page, this is a, this gets into, into, it's been provided already. Just got a letter from me that talks about one invoice is in the paint, which one's, uh, copies of the invoices, copies of the engineering contract, copies of funding agreement, uh, or your work conditions. A lot of good information related to this, it just takes a little time.
Sure.
But our, our invoices and the stats are, are anything, everybody has a copy.
So at the current time, we owe Howe and Associates a hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Down the right page.
Is that a hundred percent, or is that the twenty percent, or the eighty percent, or can somebody?
So, so far, we have been paid, uh, we've been paid a certain amount, but my understanding is it's a reimbursement program.
But we can't reimburse until we pay the ultimate, and a contract is awarded, if the grant continues.
What happens if the grant doesn't continue?
Then EDA will pay eighty percent of the engineering fees and the admin fee. And the city will be responsible for paying the other twenty.
The other twenty. Which would be twenty percent of the one seventy-two, one fifty-two. Hey, that's plus your fees.
Plus ours. And we have submitted invoice for eight thousand, but we will submit another invoice depending where the grant goes.
And we would pay you twenty percent as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
And one thing to note is we cannot ask, if product would not move forward, we cannot ask EDA for reimbursement until those invoices are paid. Because we need copies of the checks to sign with the request.
So if we pay the one seventy-two, one fifty-two now, just how does the eighty percent get back to the city? Is ace, after it's approved by EDA?
Yeah, by, in the bank account.
They just ACH it? And those accounts were already been set up?
Uh, they were set up, but we probably have to do a new, uh, just new form.
Okay.
Just to turn around time on the, they got.
The first payment is about forty-five days. Because they have to enter the information into the system.
I, I, I'm just gonna say that loud, I think this is probably a great project, um, and probably a worthy project. But I don't think the city's in any position to spend three hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. Not now. We don't even know everything. So I'm gonna make a motion that, um, we rescind the project, um, maybe look at it at a different time when we have a better understanding where we are, what's going on in the city, how much a priority this project is in the future. Uh, also pay the engineering firm and Mark Twain Council Governments, uh, whatever.
Because we have unpaid, right, invoices that are due.
Maybe that should be two motions, I'm sorry.
Right, we have unpaid invoices according to this that are due.
That's correct.
Um. So you talk about, we have to move along fairly quickly if we were to stay on the original project schedule. How long of a time do we have? To wait or to take?
Yeah, to wait, to table, or take action.
EDA wants to see movement on the project in some way, in some fashion. So like, we would need to be, the city would be doing, need to be doing something, reviewing the plans. The new council would be reviewing the plans, right? We have to have something to report back to EDA of what the city, what progress the, the city is making on the project.
So if I was saying that, plans, like, they didn't have no such.
Right, yeah, and that would be progress.
See, I get over that.
To continue on, I'd like to leave that out.
Yeah, I think, uh, so there was some, some notices that had been set up.
Correct, and.
EDA's not been authorized or yet, and so certain times passed.
Right, and Jennifer sent those notices out, and it was to the tribes, the good tribes.
And so how, 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 I don't know if I may, how long?
Thirty days, and then they never saw it in thirty days, and it's still.
So it's like, maybe this is at least. She, she started a motion, can we do it as a separate motion? Or, I basically, what I'm asking, can we, like, authorize a payment to take care of that portion of it?
Okay, you want two separate motions, this would be two separate motions. Excellent.
I'm, can I interrupt?
No, absolutely.
I believe we've already given approval to pay Jerry invoices.
Okay.
They just need to be paid.
Well, they're lying, they're way too, I wanna make sure Shannon get paid out the grant.
Right. Yes. Let me make sure that's clarified. Cindy, if we, if we pull the project, the grant will still pay, I mean, we, we, we'll pay Shannon, but the grant would still reimburse us the eighty percent, even the project goes away, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're on the hook for twenty percent regardless, but we stop incurring future costs, engineering and administration and the three points.
And could it be picked up down the road with that same study?
We would have to update everything, I'm sure.
Great, so if you would have to make a decision, are you gonna move forward with the project, or are you gonna terminate the project? If you, because if we say we're gonna move forward, then we're gonna, like, get ready to go out and forfeit it. But if you terminate it, then we can't come back a year from now. We can, I mean, Shannon would have to update plans, but we have to give them back to EDA, and we would have to start all over with applying for the lines. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. We terminated the project now, dead.
Oh, we're on the hook for one seventy-two, so what, that's twenty percent?
Twenty percent.
So if I understand it correctly, regardless of whether we move forward or choose not to, we still need to pay, uh, Howe, their invoices, we still need to pay, uh, Mark Twain, Regional Council, their invoices and get current. Regardless of when or if we cancel, and if we do cancel, then we are only responsible for twenty percent of what we paid Mark Twain Regional Council today, and twenty percent of what we would have paid Howe Company. However, they have to be paid so they can submit the invoices to.
EDA.
EDA. So we need to approve the payment to, uh, Howe, and we need to approve the payment to Mark Twain, the Regional Council. And I'm not sure that would be improper to table for now the decision whether or not we want to move forward or not. But that's entirely the board's decision to make.
Adrian feels like those bills have already been authorized, approved for payment.
I went back through the minutes, um. It's a minute, it's been seen, uh, specific dollar amounts, and there was more than one. Uh, you happen to have a copy of the invoices with you, I can't.
Yeah, there is.
There is.
There is. This is the same thing that, that we're all asking.
Because I, I, I have it in my email, too, uh, I could figure out which invoices, like, going back to the minutes, uh, were approved or paid.
Can we just do that again? Yeah, yeah, let's do it again.
I think that's the best, to have it all in one minutes.
If, if, if Mark, uh, if, if I were to, uh, this total amount now due to Howe Company for one hundred seventy thousand, one hundred fifty-two, is that the one that would need to be approved? And what's the one, where's the one that needs to be approved for Mark Twain?
Uh, I said it to Jennifer on the watch.
Do you have it, do you have it with you?
I, I think it is a better second.
Do we, do we vote or approve the correct amount?
If I just know the current, the dollar amount, I, I.
Yes.
Just the dollar amount.
Yes, we need, you approve? The dollar amount?
Eight thousand.
It's eight thousand.
It's eight thousand dollars? In that case, we would need a motion to, uh, pay Howe Company LLC the current total amount for the invoices submitted, an amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Do I have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, pay the invoices for Howe Company, the amount of one seventy-two, one fifty-two.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
I'm sorry.
You wanna do a revote?
She said aye and nay.
It's gonna be longer, so, you know. The, the motion, the motion regardless passes. Motion, motion accepted. We need a motion to, uh, pay the invoices for Mark Twain Regional Council. Motion, motion accepted. We need a motion to pay the invoices for Mark Twain, regional council. Is that the correct terminology? And the amount of eight thousand dollars, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay Mark Twain, regional council governments eight thousand dollars for expenses for the EDA grant.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm not even gonna say that. Motion passes, thank you.
And there's just another, I'm standing, I, so because the project has some water main relocation. We have to apply to D N R, uh, with permanent application to be signed, we have to send in our plans, these are the numbers that they asked for. We need the copy of that application signed. We got off of the city, but they really need to come back to us so we can package it up with the other stuff and send it in. The reason it matters is because if those things don't get issued overnight, it may take a month to get it. And so in the event that you decide to move forward having that permit, and we get, if we decide not to move forward with the project, I'll just make a phone call and let it know.
So it does not bind us to committing to completing the project. What authority is required? Who will sign that?
He's a man.
Awesome. George?
Actually, last meeting, we got the application and Jennifer actually has already signed the application. I don't know if, did you send it back to Howard or to D N R?
I sent it to D N R because that's what was on the, uh, request sheet that it's that that's where it's supposed to go.
They need certain plans, they need some of them, so.
Can can you resend it?
Um, he needs it. Shannon needs it. He's gonna send the plans and everything with it.
I was supposed to say, we're excited.
Um, actually, you have to, I don't know what's on your plan, um, lady, but I did get get that copy that I ordered, some unless you want me to sign a new one.
If if you have a new one, do you have one with you?
Yes.
Would you please present it and I will sign it and we'll resolve this now?
Okay.
All right.
Shannon, you know, I'm gonna do a big stand, but every time we authorize Shannon to do another thing, it's costing us a little bit more money.
This is not costing me more than that.
Today, today.
I, yeah, because I was here before. We already had this printed, so it's okay.
I'm just saying, and and all of these things are completed in phases. No one's listening.
I get what you're saying and I'm not, I'm not trying to question you. I'm trying to keep your options open. Anyway, you you can talk about it, decide whatever. Basically, at the end of the day, if you decide to sign it, I need a signature and a name and title and date.
You think this is gonna cost more money?
No, no, he said not. He said we are.
Does the D N R got to start this?
I think your point is that every time an engineer's involved.
Sorry.
Get right there, the two hundred and fifty dollars a minute.
Very, very few people hired engineers second.
Do I need to read the drama? I guess my motion died for lack of second, right?
Right.
Okay.
Did we need a motion for it?
No, I don't. Just sign it.
Just sign it.
We're collecting every time.
I'll contradict myself anyway.
And you have lots of stuff on the table in front of you, but here's a set of plans that have been submitted to EDA.
He can read them.
If you would like to send.
I'll tell the baby children, they're green. Anybody wanna set plans? Adrian?
Please.
We actually incorporate your area photography.
Pass down.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
And I wish I have one thing for the mayor. Mayor, the sign that's free.
It's free.
On, uh, Monday, there was a, uh, report that was due for this project and it just shows that no money has been spent on the project. We haven't asked EDA for no reimbursement, so I could get your statement.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
She, what is?
Uh, yeah, that's right there.
You're using for even like this.
Yeah, I, because you didn't have one yet that I knew of. Do we own, does the city own, we don't have to do any acquisition, do we?
That's correct. All the workers.
All right, thank you.
That was a, that was a big deal with EDA.
I I propose that we, uh, put this project on the agenda for our next meeting.
Aye.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I covered some last.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Shannon, there was also the polls from R and C that there were, it was looking like a six hundred dollar bill.
Sure.
Uh, was that included in this or is that been pushed back? I missed that part. I was reading.
So, uh, what she's talking about is, uh, there's two. Real electric power poles that need to be moved, came out with that. They're a little moving for about six hundred dollars for change. EDA said they would not participate in that because the relocation of poles doesn't go through a competitive process. As crazy as that sounds for six hundred dollars, so they're not participating in that. They do need to move their two poles to the road.
But that had to be paid.
That needs to be paid.
That's a hang up. Some people, the EDA, they said they, this is the starting point until payment is.
Has to be, okay. It would not be done through a competitive procurement process. So if you decide to go ahead, another thing that needs to be done is pay that bill, so like the poles. Is 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 that just because of this project, maybe there's a deal that the poles should be moved anyway? Uh, you know, that that corridor is full of stuff. If you, I encourage anybody to drive, you probably already have, but the next time you drive down that street, just start looking at all the utilities that are there. There's a lot. And those power poles are very close to the road. To say if they're too close now or not is kind of a touchy subject. But for us to add, uh, extra width on each side of the road there in the way. And we're only at, you know, we're at two feet on each side and doing the middle line, so they're they're really close. Six hundred dollars move is a bargain.
Okay.
How many poles are there?
Uh, there's two.
That's pole cost, remove and install.
That is cheap. One of the cheapest things of the job.
Yeah.
Here I.
No.
It's not, it's not.
I submitted it, um, two weeks ago, um, and I think this was the day we had this, but spoke up and that was the last ever, right?
We can wait until we decide if we're gonna proceed by.
I I think we don't need to worry about that.
But at the end, I can make some of those invoices, the next review.
But we haven't, we haven't, haven't done the work.
That's correct.
So the invoice is not, it's mutual, right?
All right, there's another. And I do, I do require payment before it's done.
Okay.
So whenever the big decision gets made, that'll be, yeah, someone's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to our, beginning of our agenda, under financial. Financial report, discussion of status and an update from the city clerk. I think, uh, one of the things that, uh, is, at least my understanding, one of the most important things uh, in regards to our ability to move forward with basically any of these, uh, big projects where, uh, bonds are going to be required and or, we also have to show that we have the financial ability to repay, uh, the loan on the Clarence Hen Water District Project. Uh, they have, uh, they have stopped all, all work and they have accrued approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in engineering costs, which we are responsible for. And we very much, unless something has changed, want to be able to move forward with the, with the water project. And the electrification project, we can't do anything with until we get, uh, the appropriate financial information to, uh, McLennan, McLennan Associates. So they are in a position to be able to, uh, enable the bond. If we were to attempt to do that right now, I think we'd probably have some serious problems. We will have him give us an update here shortly. So what can you tell us about the, uh, auditor? Begin with and then following that, uh, a discussion of where we are currently on reconciliation of the bank records from October twenty twenty-two to present. And I also believe that you have some, uh, concerns with the general ledger. So yes, I realize we're asking a lot, but these are the questions that, uh, that I think that we want to, want to address. Because you have to understand, uh, all the new members of the board have not been present for the many, many discussions that have been, uh, had. And, uh, I think I can speak, uh, for everyone here at this table. We want to do everything we can and make sure that we're moving forward and we get all the right resources in place to facilitate that happening as quickly as possible. So you have the floor.
Um, and all those concerns are are very, um, understandable. So, um, over the course of the last just under four months that I have been here, I've been able to identify that the general ledger uh, is inaccurate, uh, going all the way back to possibly in a fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Being September twenty-three.
Twenty-two, September twenty-two. September twenty-two. Uh, and when I say the general ledger is inactive, uh, sorry, um, is not, uh, correct. Uh, there were funds posted to, monies posted to, um, the wrong accounts. There was, uh, bank deposits, deposit events in the bank that was not reflected in the general ledger. Uh, there was a lot of payroll, uh, transactions that were never put into the general ledger. Uh, there's a lot of stuff missing out of the general ledger, uh, that I've been able to start collecting that data. Um, I began to get that data into a file. Denette and I were actually talking about it today, um. And, uh, and Joey can probably speak to this a little bit. Uh, I have concerns with, uh, our, so our last auditor statement wasn't even a, a true audit, so to speak. It was an opinion audit and.
And who who provided that?
The same person that is reverently waiting on and have been waiting on.
And that that is?
That is, uh, Steve Connolly.
So he provided the previous audit to, that covered what timeframe?
The twenty, beginning fiscal year on twenty, was it twenty-two?
I'd say it.
No, we don't have a twenty-two audit.
It was one in nineteen, is that the state?
The nineteen was the last one.
State audit.
From the real audit.
So, yes, and and that that was the point where I was going to. So our last actual accredited audit was back in two thousand nineteen. Um, and I'm highly, highly concerned with going so many years without an accredited audit. And our previous, um, audit made a opinion letter from a C P I, CPA and going with another opinion letter, uh, just in the manner of trying to get it together as quickly as possible to get those numbers out. Uh, it will, in my opinion, it'll make us, um, potentially very high risk. Uh, and maybe you can speak to that a little bit, um, on, I mean, we're not, will they issue bonds when you're that high risk?
So what we'll have to do is we'll have to do what's called a private place and and the rates will be slightly higher, but we'll, uh, nobody wants to go with numbers that they can't hang their hat on. The reality is, is that we wanna be able to to put our best foot forward. And so if there are unaudited numbers or an opinion number, uh, we're gonna have to explain why. And the, while it's a good story that our auditor died in twenty twenty and didn't, well, we have not been able to hire one. We'd rather have sounder numbers. Uh, and really, the reality is, is you would rather have sounder numbers. Uh, and so we, with some numbers, we could probably move this forward. It costs us a little more, uh, but we'll be able to get something. However, again, I I I'm not gonna say move forward unless I can show numbers and say, hey, this is your income from your, your electric system. Here is your income from your water system. Here's the income from your gas system. And I'm gonna come and and get the numbers to stay consistent to what I know. Uh, and I think the last time I had decent numbers was May of twenty twenty-two. My opinion will be, you need a water rate increase. Your electric's getting along okay. You really need to raise your gas rates. Uh, and then we can move it along.
If I may, if I may, I see two, two distinct issues and and it seems like that that perhaps, perhaps I'm wrong, perhaps I'm not. And if I'm not, we're trying to combine two separate issues. One is reconciliation of the bank records from October twenty-two to the current, which would, in effect, answer the questions with the general ledger. And that can't be accomplished unless all those boxes of documents are sorted. And what information I was given is that when, uh, the individuals we had working here that stopped in October of twenty twenty-three. What they were told or what their, what their, uh, characterization was is that we were at that point in time going to contact M M L, ask them for assistance to find resources to come in and help us, whether it be two people, four people, or six people, to start going through this volumes of documents and sorting them out to work towards getting all the bank statements reconciled. So are they one and the same or are they separate issues?
Well, um, let me interject a little bit right there. So those boxes, I've already gone through them. I've already, um, separated them into categories, um, and I and I've talked to Gary, um, about them and he believes I've accurately separated them. Uh, so I, I, what I would like to do is, um, with Denette, be able to work through the numbers and produce numbers that I can comfortably say, I believe in these numbers, these are accurate, and here's how I can support these numbers.
So you you, we would, so then if that's the case, we would be able to take that same information, come back and look at the budget we've been using that's two years old and make a determination very quickly about where we stand on the budget.
Potentially. I don't wanna say yes, absolutely, but yes.
The 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 numbers that are in the budget will also to beginning balances and any balances because the budget's two years old may may not be correct. Expenses compared to the budget may not be correct. There will be actual data that says this is the state of each of those funds. And if we have that data, Joey, you can, you can, you can make this work.
Yeah, we can, we can work through this.
So so I think, I think.
The fact that she's gone through the box is a small error.
Well, I, I, yes, they cover a lot.
Expenses, then we can try to match up in on the income side. The expenses, then we can try to match up on the income side. And so then, then we have a starting point.
So it's, I think, if I interject, it sounds like we have, maybe do have two separate issues. One, there's the whole issue that we're not really sure where we're at with the current budget, because it hasn't been reconciled for a long time. And then two, we have the issue of like a, an additional audit coming in essentially certifying the city's finances. Besides the.
Jennifer, great, Greg actually right, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong. If the general ledger was up to date and as correct as we could, would that not allow the auditor to finish his job? Okay, so let me back, let me back up for a second.
It would take more than the general ledger for him to, because we're talking about multiple years here.
I know.
You know, we could correct the twenty twenty-three and, and move from that. But like, my, what I, what I, my opinion, what we really need to do is, we, I know we can't really slow down, but we need to slow down and fix it right, and fix it. Because I, I feel like this is the cycle we're gonna keep going through in order for time purposes.
I'm, I'm talking about just super.
Thank you.
I'm doing it right, absolutely. Everybody wants to do it right. We can get her numbers, move forward on her numbers for twenty twenty-three. That'll allow us to move forward. And if you want to go back, and if the auditor says we should go back, fine, go back. But I, I, I want a starting point.
If you have twenty twenty-three, you're only missing three months out of twenty twenty-two. October, November, and December.
We're, we're, no, I'm talking, I'm talking fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three.
Okay, very good.
And, and then if they wanna go back and go, okay, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, wonderful. It is a, a really time-consuming process for an auditor. So my original penny was, give me a cash audit, let me know what the income and expenses are, so I can start shopping this and saying, hey, this, they're getting along great, or they're stumbling, or you need a rate increase, and then we can make a sound decision.
What, what, excuse me, what year is the auditor, Mr. Connolly auditing now? It's a twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-three is what I believe, is that? No, I think that's, I think it's twenty twenty, I think it's fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three.
That, 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 September, September.
Yes, or such a spread out range of, of numbers. I haven't, because that's what I thought he was auditing.
Me too.
Some of the stuff indicated that he was actually auditing the prior year, because there, there was gaps in the audits.
Well, the only thing, and I, I've only been able to exchange texts with him, but I know he was looking for the beginning balances, which would be the, which would be the ending balances in twenty twenty-two. So he's looking for beginning balances of twenty twenty-three, ending balances of twenty twenty-three. But he'll get beginning balance of twenty twenty-three from twenty twenty-two. I, I, I just don't, I, I traded some texts with him about it.
Are we tied to him?
No, no, we can disengage.
I mean, I don't know.
No, but she's got five, six. She's got six other auditors coming in. This is, he is a one- or two-man shop. He works all over the state of Missouri and Kansas, and I've seen him do great work. So I, I don't know what his issue is, but I think there is an issue.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. Can you say something about, repeat that thing about the six auditors again? Are we getting rid of Mr. Connolly? No, I just asked. Are we tied to him, or we're not getting rid of him?
That's a discussion that that has started. I don't know where it went, because, so here's the problem. And I'm just sort of asking to be honest with the counselors. I will call him, and he doesn't answer. He'll text back, I'll call you in an hour. He never calls me an hour, I call him again. And it just, it's a, a constant cycle like that. So then I began to only send text messages, or after that I would send text messages. And he would tell me, I need these numbers from this date to this date. And I had already, had, had sent him multiple times the numbers that he requested. And I said, can you go back and confirm on this date, this date, that you received this? And then I've sent it again. I've started using re-receives, delivering receipts. And he was telling the mayor he didn't receive anything. And I said, mayor, I gotta have this, this, and this, proof that he, it was read, proof that it was delivered, opened. And then he was very, very unprofessional, just in conversations, with trying to come to a workable solution on what do you need from us to get it done. We are, we did sign a contract, not, it's not a contract, it's just an agreement, right, John?
Yeah, there was no formal contract.
Yeah. And there was a, I think a thirteen-day delay in one of his checks that I didn't even know he had sent us a new invoice, and it was delayed by thirteen days. His, his contract stated clearly that work could be postponed if the payments for the contract or the agreement fell on thirty days or more past due. If they didn't fall thirty days or more past due, it was thirteen days when he got the check and cash that he, that was supposed to be the amount. Well, then he turned around and said, you know, you violated the contract. I'm under no obligation to provide the information to you in a timely manner. Now you're gonna have to wait until I'm done with tax season before you're gonna get anything out of me. And I read several text messages where he was just absolutely downright unprofessional, condescending, and spoken tones, and, I can't say tones, but it was text messages. But he spoke in a confident verbiage that was not acceptable when you're speaking to him later. And those, and those text messages was words of Melissa.
So, so is he working on it? Is he talking about working on it? Is he still saying that we?
He won't respond back to me at all. I have asked him to correspond with John Russell, and I think he would even have issues, he won't call you back. He will text, previously he had texted the mayor, Melissa, wanting, when John Russell called, wanting to know angry, wanting to know why are you running your city attorney call me? What does he want, what, why is he bothering to contact me now? I'm trying to get work done, and now he's bothering me. Melissa said, please call my city lawyer. He's trying to obviously get something done for us so we can get an audit.
Okay, so how much have we paid him?
Thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four.
And what was our agreement?
Up to fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven, I think, is what the original agreement. But back in two thousand twenty-two, we paid this individual, do you guys remember? It was like up to eighty?
I can't, I've never heard of it. A lot of things are expensive.
That's what I said.
Uh, one hundred.
I've never heard of a lot of need that expenses.
By thirteen thousand, or what did you say?
So in two thousand twenty-two, there was a, the, the final dollar amount for supposedly like a year's long worth of work was over eighty thousand dollars that was, went to an auditor for this particular audit, that all we got was an opinion. That's what I've been, been trying to tell you guys, like the last, um, several.
You think someone, eighty thousand dollars, you got an opinion? Was that they got it?
Was this the same guy in the office?
Same guy.
Was that they got it in the office, like it was?
Yes.
It was a contract.
Yes, but he didn't.
That was.
It's what, so they.
So I, I don't, but you know, I see a lot of audits, and I see a district make a five thousand dollars, which is one income, one expense. I, may, maybe, maybe they're fifteen thousand, but I, that, that just seems, and eighty seems way too high for anything.
Yeah, I brought that up several times in the interview. Nobody could really explain like how it got to that point?
What I would like to do is, I would like to get Mr. Connolly's phone number from you.
Absolutely.
Tomorrow, I will call his office, and I will try to ascertain from him what the status of the audit is, what his intentions are, and if there are any, if there's any information that he then says he lacks, I will send a message, each one of you what that is. And I will discuss with you, Jennifer, the contents for our discussion. And then we will do whatever we have to do next, which may be up to including calling a special meeting. We've got to get this going. What?
We gotta get all of that.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have choice. We're dead in the water.
We've lost.
What's a, what, how long's an audit take?
Four weeks?
Four, uh, four months.
Four months?
Yeah, the city audit will, they'll come in and, yeah, they'll come in and. Yeah, they're four. They'll come in, they'll be here a month, they'll be here several weeks, so they'll.
So it should be almost done.
You've got six auditor, auditing firms coming in to make a proposal, right?
Yes.
Okay, that'll give us a good idea of what is your cost of six other months to compare.
Joey, when we were having our meeting, you, I, I may have written this down incorrectly. You, you made some inference about a cash basis audit, beginning and ending balances and expenses for three of the fourth fund. And you seemed to intimate to me that if we had that data, that would allow you to obtain, obtain favorable terms for the bond, for the, maybe the seven point three, which was the first one.
You, you need to know as much as I need to know. I mean, I gotta sell it. But you guys gotta have a little confidence that, oh yeah, we can pay this.
And, and the question I have is, the description of what you said would be the minimum, the cash basis.
Right.
Jennifer, is that different and separate from what we are asking for? Or would it be a part of, would we be able to ascertain that information as a component of the audit we're receiving? In other words, are they two separate issues? Are they done two separate ways? Or can you derive both sets of information from the same audit? I'm not an auditor, guys.
I think this is exactly what we've asked for.
Yeah, and I'm working on exactly what he just talked about. I'm working on getting him those numbers.
You are?
Yes.
Do you have any suggestion to this board when you think that will be completed? Let me try that one more way. What could we do different on resources, or resources available, that would allow you to complete that in a very, very timely fashion?
So potentially relocating the offices.
That, that's part of the discussion that's gonna come up. But let's just say that that was already done. You're not getting, you know, I think you made a reasonable, a reasonable argument relative to interruptions caused by the placement of offices, blah, blah, blah. And I'm not gonna go any further than that. And so assume that's done, what additional resource or what additional actions this board need to take to help assure that you get that done on a timely basis? In other words, as quick as possible.
The purchase of some computer equipment. I, I absolutely have to have a bill spring I need to be able to review.
So the highest ranking there is, I guess, three. We could kind of worry about how much work was going on today, and tomorrow, and end of the month.
The twenty-fourth, or, is it, is it, is it Monday, the day of the day that happened? I mean, is it Friday, or Monday?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I understand all that.
Um, I think we got, and I actually did a complete audit, and I've already identified what, uh, of the bail pass payment that we're on issue. Uh, I, I, I don't always have that data. No, I understand the things that, that, um, from what I've been over. So, um, we're not gonna, so, so, you, you know, going it was discovered that there was the payment had been, the, 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 the conversation.
The check was up.
Yeah, and it was, and it was on the, and it was on the. And it was like a large dollar amount, it was supposed to be spent. I discovered that in the last couple of days, when I was taking from home overnight, attacking down the, 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 the bail pass. Seven, 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 I mean, I, I, that was out. The bail pass was being, was being, and supposedly had a, and so, or supposedly, I don't know, or, or. So, um, I, 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 I don't, I don't.
Did all the backside effects of this?
Uh, I don't know. Hey, somebody like. I mean, we like, if we have some of these things, we can get off on a even basis. Yeah, I don't know.
Word section, you can have a word section.
Yeah, I have a word section to figure out how to.
As far as the office movement and those other things, does he need to be upgraded?
No, I, I was told that. You know, there's, there's not, there's not debt down there. That's not being realized by the state.
Not good.
Um, but there's also the words which we're exploring. Yeah, we can get all that figured out. Um, also state service plus as very, very chief officer who might be the person for best or two, but they have their. Till the next meeting, we could have a better idea to work, you know, get an idea how much property we made and then.
That would be fantastic.
Hard for you to say right now. Yeah, I want to ask a question and I'll make sure I know what you're doing. Is this information that well, we need to have the twenty twenty three all done? Or is this information that we need that's been. Here, there's so much stuff. It, what, what, okay, in some, the twenty twenty three stuff, we don't either keep on it, we keep them. Or we don't, it would be available for new officers, which I can say on B level.
Because Jennifer's doing their labor.
They're, yeah, Jennifer will be doing it. So if, if I were to come in and be ready for an offer, I would sit down, hold your box, and I was going through.
And Jennifer's already doing it. And so the, the others, we're not even asking for appreciation. Because Jennifer's doing it, here's what our expenses were high here, here's what our. And so it, it's more of digging and, and digging and taking apart because it's in this file. And so she'll be putting it into an Excel spreadsheet, which will make the order shot a hundred thousand. What should be normal, this or counting. So there's been three years of not much done properly in, in the back office. It's from what I hear, it sounds like, well, that's, we'll put it over here. Well, that's, that's over. And nobody really knows what that track. There's, so, and all of a sudden Jennifer's like, what do I do? And your carpet normally belongs to some director saying, and say, this is how it's done. And just didn't get done for you. Should recognize that.
There's so much talk on the post in our department. It, it, it looks like for very long time.
The annual letters and it's one intention to, to leave the business off like that over here previously. And you came back into, uh, this, uh, the two statements, annual letters, need to be. And the fact that we need to be recognized, I'll give those to go there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that's what we, you take the bond, you gotta do it. Yeah, I think you're like, I just, I, I don't want this council, um, to make the mistake of say that we've got all these numbers, this is a tax law. I, I just don't advise you. Think of the right way to make it long time, this is not clean up for good. It's not, it's utilized, you know, good counter practice is pretty forward. Always, if I'm by gap policy or gap to these, um, and don't trade. And I'm under contention to do. However, I want to do a. Oh, no, that's, mine and her, like, we, we, I'm, I'm. I see that it's too many places and if we have to, uh, another be passed and put on that. So hopefully the location office will be. It's different than she really was different because honestly, I think it was more forty. None of the first, I've been uninterrupted without somebody coming in and sitting down saying, I don't resent you, but I do got a job and, and, and since you've been. So it, it, it's been, had a job of two. We did something.
This one's off. LP twenty seven is longer.
The studio's gonna melt now, both of them at the same time. Is there something I don't know, but is it like, could you? Our size where it'll be yours too?
I know, but that's your first time.
And, and one thing that can be done is Alex is, Alex is very good about being able to operate the north, um, by himself and, and getting the, uh, thesis posted and all of that straight away. Where the new hire production will be downstairs frequently with.
Blah, 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 and I'm not gonna go to that. And, uh, so assume that's done. What additional resources or what additional actions before we say, well, the whole, sure that we get that done on a timely basis. Another board.
Um, the purchase of some computer equipment. I, I absolutely have to have a bill of spring. I'd be able to review data on my side, so I'll be able to look at it and study on the other side. Um, I would also, um, it would be great if I had, um, the net purpose of on quite a bit of this, that would be fantastic.
Now, something right there is, it might have. How, how would you get something that wrong? You're not gonna have your assessment still, what others can have. You're not gonna get down on. What, and it gets something kind of all along, but if you're helping her, you don't. I'm not trying to critical, but if you think, I think that's a reasonable question to ask. But I've done this before, where I say, hey, I want you to do this. Uh, he's, he's like, and they did it, but something else go down, and then when I found out, like, oh, I don't know. Exactly what you asked me to do. You didn't ask me to do the other one.
Alex is very good at that.
Hey, Alex, sure is.
He, he spent a great backup and he's very good.
The executive one is, is, uh, that he can help reassign, uh, resources that is necessary and needed. So we can make that happen. What was before you, who do you approve by the second? Extreme for your best, would you do that?
Yes, uh, well, we, she'll be enough bill of spring. I only bill thirty. Um, relocation of the offices, um. I, I would be willing to work overtime, have a lot of work to pay, and we, the interim, I would be willing to pay.
I can't see what, what, maybe we're paying.
Yeah.
Maybe authors will go to.
Um, and it's not to be adapted to do it.
Alex, every once in a while, thirty dollars, thirty seven dollars every long time. Can we also, can we, uh, make it, we got to determine some amount that we would authorize, uh, send people over to this office that is monitored, uh, and obviously numbers. And we will go in and start knocking out, we'll go block.
Do we not have obstacles, those blocks? Three, maybe going to that, without the roadblock.
I reassign the clock to all, we said, in that, uh, part, I'm going to all of them. To Alex. And you have reassurance that you're gonna get stuff, leave downstairs, don't have monitors, don't have computers, uh, don't have the resources. And I, I'm not too best right now. But that's not enough resources to be figuring that out very quickly. We believe.
Yeah, we will be very diligent when it comes to identifying resource barrier and something else will be immediately that's going.
Well, I will actually do, I'll be strict and most of the time, let me know how, I will comment. We can do that.
My question is, without those things, is it, is it a three year, is it a month? How close are we to hiring?
That all is with, that's all in a super table. Some other stuff. I have that, that's all taking the, the one source that's been, it's a miracle.
Oh, uh, there's a doctor, um, I had on the board, um, that did something down there. But then I can, we can figure that out.
I mean, it's just, it's the, uh, it's.
Yeah. Um, but that, that's the timeline. Um, I, I, I would love to tell you, uh, I could, I could do it in three weeks. Uh, I think. Yeah, I, I'm trying to get, you know, that obstacle, roadblock downstairs, hide, not being elected. But then after that, two three, and how much work. There's a difference in a lot, of lot, of work. Um, not one thing that I, I want to do, that the fact that it's a deal, there are a lot of stuff we are currently aware of that we've discovered in this, uh, it's a lot of work. Um, seriously, I've got a, a timeline because I do not like any sort of manner. I do not like, like I'm counseling now, I want to be very successful, able to speak and wrestle and talk, but not to sacrifice of, of actors. But I believe, like, if you have, I don't know how timely this is, we're all about. About next, you know, we'd be totally relocating downstairs, I know, but.
I think this is exactly what we're asking for.
Yeah, uh, I'm working on exactly what we just talked about. I'm hoping I didn't have to.
You are. Do you have any, uh, suggestions to the board when we think that will be completed? Um, let me try that one more. What could we do different on resources or resources available that would allow you to complete that in a very, very timely basis?
So, um, potentially, uh, the, uh, the offices.
That's part of the sentence that come up. Let's just say that that will go again, and you're not getting, uh, I think you made a believable, uh, believable uh, relatively interrupted, uh, call. But they do have a virtual time clock option, which would basically mean you pick up an iPad mounted on the wall, and they punch in a PIN number to clock in, and they're done. There's no setup cost that is free send a punch. So, I mean, I agree, I agree to this for, um, as an example, twenty people, I didn't know. If they punch it in on two times a day, you're looking at like, uh, fourteen dollars a year. And they, uh, murder and uncool and that, what are you doing? Versus, yeah, twenty five hundred for a physical.
Wasn't worth anything, but.
This would be an efficient to what, okay.
What's the first?
You're just. I had a thirty minute call with that guy right on top. Um, there are, how many employees would you say are having issues with the, uh, system? What's the part that I would get?
Three.
All three?
Three. One, three, um. You got me wrong then.
But she said it all be down there.
No, that's not true. They, your dad is the one that is clocking in.
Kevin did say that they all clock in on the.
No, they tell me different. I see they're clocking in and out times and they're not good presenties and they.
I know, when I looked at mine, it said, it's an order that I'm approved.
No, the reason is because I do not have the time vibration down. And there was a mass download put into testing. And the information that was, the quality testing on what is completely after it. I haven't had the time to sit down and go through and say, okay, this is an after it and make these kinds of assessments are easy to make. I haven't had the time to sit down and, and come through that.
So what, what could we do so we don't have to do that? Like, what would you do with what the current system, go hide? Okay, um, there's hardware options for time clocks, but they are not cheap. Um, seventeen hundred to twenty five hundred dollars a week. For him to sign up, to decide to get the back of, if he has a mayor, the mayor that universally calls that order, that would give him some. That costs, that costs about hundreds of dollars a week. He's already got one.
You already got one?
He's already got it.
We're, we're, I can, I can accept that.
Marco, would, would Marco be the one to touch this on that?
Okay, I'll take that. If it was mayor of that, you know, say, mo dot org. I'll take the most they got or you work on.
Yeah, without, we can get all the.
Okay, blue light, long, go to online, uh, test on table. Who wants to do work?
You know, we, uh.
Well, we had complaints from, uh, our employees, Mr. James. We were nothing, uh, who else here is still, uh, and we were looking for a way to, uh, continue to use test on. But to find something that's a little more, or used or friendly for our associates to apologize to anyone scientific consulting, but, you know, we have everybody from, you know, eighteen sixty five or, in my case, seventy. Uh, so, you know, not everybody's comfortable with some technology that we may have shown to you. So that's, that's really different.
Well, I, I just know that, uh, has more security laws than you say on that there. And, uh, goes to the official and also with cybersecurity now, you need to knock down.
Okay, we need to say that one's on this, that's a true, true. You want that? Okay, fine. Michael, do you go back there?
He was a heavier.
Um, things that. It's actually fairly simple process. You just have to register on, on government site, but basically you have to register with your, hopefully with your city email. And then give them your listing, uh, website, you want, if you're that you're, you say you are. And the, the site that's, you know, just to have neurocitymo.org now, neurocitymo.gov is available. And it's free. Of course, that doesn't include the courses, but it's, it's no names, right? Twenty thirty dollars a year. It, it, it's a very painful one we've scored it.
Yeah.
You, you, you contact me, you're down, we'll go there. And if I need contacting, we'll remember. We will. Thank you. I'm talking about giving you an address to get tonight, or because I think that will help you a lot if you had a, at least had a, you know, she, oh, that order. Well, hurting where you are.
Not now. All, all of them should have the doctor. Well, no, I know that, okay.
I'm sorry.
It is, we have to take them down there. Um, so, Jennifer, you have somewhere, uh. Um, so, give me three open, do you have somewhere, um, yes, this is, um, um, you have somewhere, it's currently offered, whether you like iPad, or, um, Android, they are waiting in the box, so they have a thousand dollar cost, um, in order, if you sign up for the, uh, tablet, and if those, if you make some of that, please, I want to be making progress, you know? Uh, one of them is specifically, where you talk to them, about twenty bucks a month, if you would get a free, free Samsung, I don't know, tablet. And then, these are all their offers that currently providing to us, I was looking at the paper, and, and.
Okay.
Look over that.
Hope, hope, we, we, we will, we will, uh, we will take these others, we will, we will, we will, we will.
About what, uh, uh, we, we, uh.
Smith, David Holker, Darren Kendrick, and Mr. Spaulding. Economic Development, Mike Schneider, Chairman, Rob Simpson, Co-Chair, Lloyd Quinn, Board Member. David Kendrick, Citizen Member, Ryan Saunders, Thomas Nelson, and Alex Jennings. Parks and Cemetery, as we change this back. E D H Chairman. Citizen Members, Kenny Fulton, Matt Green, Becky Holland, Darren Kendrick, Donnie Hayes, and Board Member Greg Smith, and then we just by staff members Kevin O'Brien. For, this may have begun separately, but Mr. Yeager's, uh, term is up on Sunday, Donnie, and I would like to have him reappointed for his term to be more suitable. Can we tie that into the rest of these other board guys?
I think so.
Okay, the motion is set.
I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, there's, uh, what the board has said is read and, uh, most of you got it.
Okay. The motion is second to approve the general structure, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, passes. Further, the advisory council represents for their board, we must be all about, if we assume we can, we can rule brief that. We had total brief, I need that approved. So the motion is second to approve Mr. Buckman as the advisory council for their board is on record. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And the rest of these things, um, the leaders of the month, yeah. So I'll give you that time to do that, so we want to, oh, we have next. Yeah, yeah, I want to know. Because I'm good with that, there's this topic that wouldn't need to be just, uh, a little bit second on and nobody else, but that's the main thing that you guys have to, thank you for coming back. Thank you.
Moving on. Moving on, uh, in the administrative human resources, we're going to, they're talking about getting their order approved by board. I was told I have to say their name. But here we go. The motion second, all in see. Public Works Committee Chair, Adrian Saunders, Co-Chair, Greg Smith. Citizen Members, Amy Anderson, Donnie Hayes, Dick Buckman. Staff Members, Terry Hoffman, Kevin Lee, Kevin O'Brien. Adam Holman? And we're going to go back, is that happening on another one?
Yeah.
Alright, Public Safety Committee, we should review board, Adrian Saunders Chair, my co-chair, Greg Smith. All in favor, Ray Roden Citizen, Phil Parkall Citizen. It'll be fixed by the public staff members, Chief Rettie, Chief Sack, Jeff James. I'll watch out for that. You're from. Administration Committee Chair by Jason Hoffman.
Many same jobs without manager responsibilities are, are fifteen dollars per hour at the Donald, at numerous places. If you want to consider raising it, I'm just giving the, what was it last year? Fourteen, if they were to pull this a dollar or two. Yeah, I didn't know that there too. I, so that's, we didn't take that on the original.
Well, I pardon you. Uh, I will do my approach and I mean, uh, that, uh, bringing that fifteen dollars per hour.
Okay. That word, I'm gonna look at the Alarck board, but I'm working with everybody.
Okay, we have a motion second, I get to pay the school manager fifteen dollars per hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to, um, because I understand the school staff, everybody that's by managing Amy Moss. Maybe at the time manager, district manager, first boss, senior guard commander chair, chair. We debate with everybody, Steve Stewart, first regard, Reagan chief, I don't know, I mean, I mean, me. Ryan Bird, Michael Jones, Steven Moss, Stephanie Jordan, Emma, Raya, and Elaine Mandel.
Hey, before you guys do that motion, I want to be very clear, one of those guards is my son. And so we want to make sure that you guys go pay to that, and, okay, I just wanted to be clear about that in your office.
We have a motion second to approve all the recommended associates or the senior staff. All in favor?
They authorize the very top thing with two hundred dollars. Or if you hired, like that.
There are motion second to approve, I'll put the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Maybe I'll be able to. Yeah, we, we gotta give style later. We need to, we need to sign up for it.
We would need a motion for first, first year life guard, twelve dollars a week and fifty per hour. We have a motion?
No.
We have a, we have a motion second, the motion second to approve payment for first year life guard, twelve dollars a week and fifty per hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. First year life guard, twelve dollars per hour. Need a motion for senior life guard, which needs more than one year of service, at thirteen dollars a week and fifty per hour. We have a motion?
No.
There are motion and second, the senior life guard who pays thirteen dollars a week per hour. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, senior life guard, thirteen dollars a week per hour. Assistant managers. Any motion?
I make the motion to hire assistant manager, twenty to fourteen dollars, twenty five, fifty per hour.
We have a second.
Sorry.
We have a motion and second to hire assistant manager, fourteen dollars a week per hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, still saying.
I'm making the motion to hire, uh, the, uh, the market, uh, the fifteen dollars per hour.
What's your chief? The deal is, I don't want to do all of it, but, okay. It must be.
Do you agree? They can clearly, you know.
You know, I don't know, maybe looking at, you know, like four, three, four.
If nothing's moving, that's before, so, right.
So, you don't really.
I think everything we hear, I'm sure. But the, the things we need to step and go tonight are, we need to say yes to going with the individual service. Your acting of trust, the chair of police. For thirteen dollars, we, we need to decide on wages. And we need to approve the list. I think that.
The list is.
Yes, it is. Everything highly in the authority is sort of, I'm on special timeline, but I'm just going out, I do it.
Oh, okay, I've got that, I'm, okay, I'll look right over that.
Yeah, I would, I would ask you, if I can, you know.
Okay, and you, you, you've interviewed the school staff or someone had, and so you're all.
I'm actually, I have everybody that does. Typically, you like to have this meeting, at that, because we settle back, you know, for this.
There's, you know, a lot of hours, yeah.
Exactly.
All these names are asked.
Correct.
So what we need to begin with, the motion to allow, if you have a very tall, long certification, that costs a hundred dollars to be.
Two hundred.
I'll make the motion that.
We'll, we'll go on to the other part that you guys have priority, they're going to be, the guards themselves, I've got a list, uh, school staff hires. You can look there, there's a manager, assistant manager, a senior guard, a show guard, you can verify they're already certified. From last year, you can see the certification, if they're good to go, but the first year guards, that list there, will all have to have. So, and here's the deal, there is no way, we have time, to get somebody certified, get them to train, we can then back your, certify everybody else, you know, through. By next Monday. Openly, we can. You can, go ahead, I've got a company called, through the American law, and two are certified for this year, and an extra, who hopefully, that they either owe, I haven't hired yet, but I asked her to, we get free. Because we're paying for it. If they're certified, you, we will show that, but it's a proper, that's what I say.
You want to have first start to have one, is, is you have some certified?
They're about sixty, oh, they're about three hundred fifty dollars. Yeah, and they have to go there, this will be, this person will come in, certainly two days, and, um, they. At all school too. Yeah.
On the last, maybe fifteen years, three months, or even more.
It is. And then that, I don't have to worry about it, because it's a little, I don't know, so you didn't, and that's really, it's like, and honestly, not easy. Because the lives, someone may, they're thinking, and someone wants, several, that gets just, get qualified to take a class, and then move to another country, and reasonable, that's where it is. Which, maybe that, if the girls are coming from Star Guard, y'all don't like that, and they give us money, that, it's a different, we're working at the back. Problem with that is, when we contact Star Guard, they're not a trainer for short, they train trainers. Therefore, this is something that you need to make your, wait for that, wait before they go, in fact. And I tried to direct this back in January, and it got nowhere. So what happens is, we have to have, provide enough to get off board, we need to go through, um, boy, uh, boy, me. I have a girl that was worth two hundred dollars, took us in, about eight guards, seven, three, two certified, six, four. And so that's a really good deal, however, when you do that, I'm not going to give that seven thousand five hundred this year from, well, I, this is a job, you know. Okay? But, in saying that, I also told her that we would have to, I asked her, just give us a free certificate. And that free certificate will have the results, and try to find the, like, eighteen or above, that is, that she will currently certify. And then we can then send that person to say, oh, to get started training, and then have our own player, that's kind of the goal, is to get our own player. And I just have all the doctors that, what do you mean, on eighteen and above? We can't have to be eighteen or above, to, to go to the school, that's why we can't currently use any of our current orders, you know. So it's an issue. So tonight, it's, we have to have approval to, to get our margin through to the American law. And we work with force getting Star Guard certified.
Are we being a hard person?
Yes, several of them are, several of them are, and if you don't do that, we have inventory, and we have a balance present. But at the end of the night, we're going to, that last one, we did the positive, here's the library positive, and then, and administrator, he's often, sort of, he's like, balance, to make sure everything's right. And then he did the negative, how this has to pay. Things like that, but it makes it again, in a situation where we've got all these guys, who are always pretty of the worst right now, last thing they want is school, X. You know, stuff they have to worry about as well, although, it's got to go. So whose role is that? And how is that going to take place, that needs to be decided tonight, but, like I said, it was just, you need, it was the real one. Something we need to get going, along, what's that, what are these are going to be, of course, getting money to the bank, and he's going to be the secondary, to make sure that everything looks good. And that's in, that's in, everyone's, you know, following that. Um, wait, this is my, my, this is something that we, that I, I'm doing interviews, probably, and so that is more than we can, if I, if anything else, want to. Now, I made a suggestion, that is totally true, all, all, that would be something one of the cells that people want to do, you know, bring on, hang a little bit, um. However, you know, but that's how we decide it, so that I can have a forty five, thirty one. Right now, there is no definition of what that pays is.
You put forward, what's for?
There is no. There is?
At the conclusion of the meeting, we.
Okay. Um, another issue is starting. So, the deal starting, that plan is going to pass, is that, sure. Okay, so, where I'm at, is to make you guys aware, um, my role here, it, it's very unclear about. And so we come into this, I really don't know what my role and the property were all. Um, the dog was called Paul, or very kind, and Jackie was here, she was there, the administrator was the pool. Uh, the manager's orders was, was the pool. Now, in a situation where, there's no Jackie, and I'm having that, and so, I have, like, I don't know where my role falls. My authority resides, well, and so I have a lot of questions, I put, you know, you should have a, well, that, um, is sort of, you have a, um, a sort of, a special outline of questions. And to think that sort of thing happens now, is the role. And then that's got to be decided by some of it, some of it, we need to update later, we need to, whatever. Um, so first thing I think I was going to make is basically, who's in charge, um, getting back to yourself, the management department, who I call to get, the people up. Or if something's broken up there, or I lost there, we started to open, two fifty, so. So I, I need to know who's in charge of that. Um, one of the things is the united paperwork, so we take and, and our girl.
So you have the major, I say, I can teach my phone at that, at that stage, uh, the one for public, you, you know, you modelize it, you know, on posted it up.
Well, it's got to set somebody, you thought, good.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't, we didn't have some stimulus that was down, that could hear some point down, we could have forced out. Now, we, we, we're, so, how about this, let's just go ahead, and, um. But, but do we want to, that's the first question, we want to.
Were you all here at that time? Just on the screen. It's a high thing, I want to take it.
I'm, I'm.
I think for you, like, I'll maybe be getting my, you know.
Do we start with maybe, if, if you like, for public comment? Well, it's coming, it is, yeah, I mean, it's worth a dollar. But you're still in the, we, the teachers, the way.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I hope that maybe it would be good, but it's low priority.
Priority, I say, I'm, I'm, I'm. We're looking at perspective to add in, to, 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 to. Yeah, some, yeah.
Whoever else is waiting to speak, maybe I'll go.
But then we just get to go, well, I'll tell you my.
Okay, well, this. Any one with a school report?
Well, I'm.
So, so we're looking at four thousand, what's the amount?
Yes.
Carrie, what you're just calling school? What, the system you have at the school, what kind of equipment you can have on that? This, I'll stop your head, I'm not going to do it.
Uh.
Well, I'll give my question on that. Oh, yeah, oh, that's for one, right? Five.
What, what's the problem? Particularly, uh, the, the thing with all the teachers, um, their, um, how, how they see, you have to use the method in order to get the order, one person's not telling, and, and, you know, and the person's not telling why.
Also, and I had also put a number together, the Amca, which may be, this, that, that, um, um, he is missing, uh, two tables, who, I don't know exactly where, where it's them, um. I think, yeah. If I'm an extra, I'm.
Okay, we're good.
We're good, okay. So the first field one came in. And I, there's, I have a system designer that I, probably looking to the after, um, ten microphones, ten fans, um, mixers, speakers, everything. Four thousand, thirty dollars. Um, natural, brain, and a Yamaha. Um, and I've been through stableing and everything, the, I don't know, sorry, I was telling. It's something that, uh, not quite twenty six, but that is missing materials, it's also the mixture of the speakers, which aren't that, that are expensive. Um, and we have file, microphone, file, uh, this would be for, the throttle can help microphone, two spares, and two wireless, uh, microphone for public comment, and the, uh, crush field one has that as well. Um, and stickers and mounts, mixers and, and microphone, two fans. Now, the, these microphones, uh, I don't know how much I cost, twenty dollars for a pair of, no, sorry, that's, that's the fans. But the actual microphones are on some five, and those are piled, and the crush fields are, uh, shirts, which is a commercial, very, microphones, another hundred dollars. Right? I'm probably a small one, it's down there. So, I mean, I'm afraid, I'm not, 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 I'm not. Well, the problem is, since when you have, you can, the smaller ones go, it's, that's one dollar, four microphones. So you have to go to the twelve, or the sixteen, and order to pack them. You know, they.
What this is all about is, uh, a number of people who have been present as, uh, previous board members have, have, uh, set, they couldn't hear what was going on. The people are here, thinking that's a little, well, someone out, uh, in the, in the gallery, even if they were against you, they're not supposed to act here, well, not to, uh, know what's going on. The concept, what we want to do is we want to authorize, uh, microphone speakers and, and, uh, mixers for, for the use of. What that comes down to is align that goal, that's what happens, uh, to get. That's the case, so within, uh, wireless off the top, with a week and two for that. And I, to read that discussion, I'll open up the floor for discussion. Do you have any expertise for that, there, by the department? And I have a dumb question, maybe, like, do we have a good old four, this, or, uh? Is it, do we have a plan?
Well, okay, is this thing, I love, they keep saying this thing wires them out, or is that?
Well, I, I don't know, does anyone, does anyone know? It's probably wired, but you know. All right, here, there's a speaker in that corner, that, that's, uh, dropping off. I was gonna say, if not, uh, electric department has given the certification for, uh, speakers that come from the pool, and I was on, uh, it's just, uh, pretty cheap, Amazon, without the deal, so. Yeah, my, my goal is to, uh, I, I reached out to, to crush field. And.
Been informing you, I've heard that.
Awesome, thank you. All right, moving right along.
So, that would be, that's, uh.
Well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be.
We have the most, uh, 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 are you, oh, I'm wanting to go with the. The mayor's office does not have a mayor or laptop or computer. Um, I asked the board to authorize, the mayor's office to purchase you a laptop or a computer, for the, a laptop, if you get reverse one for, that four hundred bucks, and you get millions for, yeah, six, seven hundred, five fifty, about, five hundred. So, how about authorization for six hundred fifty, how many can motion all right, the mayor's office, for the purchase, uh, laptop computer, or a desktop computer, that's important. Up to, up to, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh. Okay, we have a motion, I hope it's on the board, yeah, because I think. I have a motion and sentence, allow the, uh, mayor's office to purchase laptop, computer, uh, to announce, if it is in all, all favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Looking back. We'll hit it out. I, oh, I'll leave, we'll hit it out. Okay, the next thing on, on the agenda is, um, as you do it, I just want you to know, we didn't do that before.
Around three hundred, eighty eight thousand, we would initiate the payment for, at your charge. Okay, so maybe before, we know the same points to get these numbers on, like, what we would be getting out. No, it's, it's, no, it's back up to that number, three hundred times of all thirty, huh?
That's, no, I, I thought it was everyone, I said.
No.
Uh, so if you did, everyone's right there.
Three, it's everyone, yeah.
Three hundred and dollar thirty, you reported sixty years here.
Yes, or who gets that number, someone has four, that's based on three hundred.
Well, and I, I agree with Lori, that, that. Certainly pays the city more, but it's rather, you know, that.
And also, it's highly, your personnel probably doesn't need the same like you, and it's, what it's something, so how can you?
You would have no need to, 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 to.
Oh, God, I'll second. Oh, God, I'm glad you're, you're...